That was terrifying. By that, basically, so you present your capstone project and then your graduation panel, and then they open it up to anybody and you can just get grilled on anything you had in your entire program.
We had to do a capstone presentation, but it was just.
The last floor.
So I went first, so the other ones hadn't gone yet, one of them.
Hey, good morning, everyone. I have nine o'clock. So today is a work session. We have a form present. So we'll get started. We normally don't approve agenda again, but we need to add on to the end an executive session.
Personnel.
For personnel. Everybody good with that? All right, we'll jump right into it. All in favor? So we jump right in. A lot to cover. New business. Start with the county manager, presentation by Merrick.
Yeah, so just to cue this up, so they're a consulting group that we've used in the past to help us with some of our agent facilities where we have water intrusion especially. So they've been working with us to try to find a solution for the water intrusion into the Lee Building Auditorium. They helped us develop a spec that we put out on the street for folks to bid on, and they're going to present what that spec is and then what the responses were and what their recommendations were for.
Okay.
Is that about right, summing up?
Correct. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good mine?
It's all yours.
All right. I'm Jody Ashery. You originally started with dealing with me with Edifice Consulting, and I turned sixty-three and I sold Edifice Consulting to Merrick Consulting. They're out of Marietta. We operate as an independent division of them down in Byron, so not a lot has changed. This is my slow walk into retirement over the next seven years. So it was Edifice Consulting and now it's Merrick. And so, and this is Jonathan Applegate. He is brand new with us and he's training to work as a consultant. He's a Georgia Tech graduate. We're very excited about having him. He's on you with us. We were brought out to look at the auditorium for y'all on the back of the main building. This was a school building in the past. The problem was is stucco on the inside of the building is crumbling and in a terrible condition, and we were asked to assess this. We looked at the building very carefully and we determined that the main source of water infiltration is damaged and defective. Pilaster caps on the exterior, the pilasters or jutouts on the wall that help hold the wall into place. The building in the past, not in the recent past, but years ago, has clearly been fire damaged and rebuilt. I think when it was a school that you had a fire there years ago. So we've got different ages of masonry on the exterior. We got a low slope roof above that we determined to be in good condition and not causing your problems. The exterior walls, we got the window installation was a little weak. The seals between the windows and the walls is pretty weak. The seals between the windows and the window frames is pretty bad. The shingle roofing was found to be a little substandard, and so we incorporated the replacement of the shingle roofs over the stage area because when we redo the walls, which is primarily what this project does, that is a golden opportunity. The good flashings in for the shingles and most shingle applicators can get the field right, but they struggle with complex details into stucco like you have. So we included that into the project. We wrote a project manual. We provided extensive details and drawings, which is in the packet that we sent in. If you want to see that, we could talk about it if you want to get that deep into it today. But we dictated exactly what should happen. We put it out on the street through advertisement and evidently Mr. Allen did a great job of getting attention for this project. So we got some really good applicators in here to do this. Now, waterproofing is a very specialized trade and we don't know of anybody south of Atlanta that does this. Most of the walls are in the metro areas and most of these companies travel at least the southeast. It's more of a widespread situation. You're not going to get a local bidder on this that would qualify to do this. Attention was great. The original low bidder was Midwestern Waterproofing Inc. And we looked at the bids when Mr. Allen sent them to us, and the way this process runs is y'all receive the bids and then once the bidding is closed or sent to us to analyze, we like it that way because it avoids any appearance of impropriety and it works with your construction rules. So we got the bids and we put them into our spreadsheet and we analyzed them and we determined they were unbalanced. So we contacted these nice folks and we interviewed them and we discussed with them what we thought the project could entail and what they did. We narrowed it down to the problem of that they did not include enough tuck pointing for our standards. And tuck pointing is when there are bricks and there's mortar between the bricks and in freeze thaw cycling of the mortar, it eventually degrades. And then there's a standard for when we've got to cut that mortar out and put new mortar back, and that's called pointing or tuck pointing is the way that sport's done. It's kind of an interpretive thing. We don't give a dead cold percentage like some consultants do. We say defective. So these folks had not worked with me directly. They had worked with the office out of Atlanta before and they were not as familiar with me. When we went through what my expectations were, where determined where they thought my expectations were, we determined there was a significant gap in the amount of tuck pointing that they thought they were going to have to do and that I know they're going to have to do. So we gave them the option and we talked with Mr. Allen and involved him in it, and they opted to withdraw their bid, which was clearly unbalanced, which put us to the number two bid. That's J.J. Morley Enterprises. I have about thirty years of track record with them. They just got through doing an extensive project for us at the police department in Columbus, for Columbus Consolidated Government. I've worked on and off with them for years and years. There's not a contractor in this business that I feel any better about than having on the job than J.J. Morley Enterprises. They do really pretty work and they're really easy to work with and they're not money hungry. They're willing to do what's needed to do to the job. So with the withdrawal of the low bid, we recommended J.J. Morley Enterprises is what we did. The way those numbers break down is the base bid is two-hundred-and-sixty-nine-thousand-three-hundred-and-sixty dollars. We had significantly higher bids than that. I don't think those bids are illegitimate, but I think this bid is legitimate. We had an alternate to apply a salicyne water repellent for nine-thousand-eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars. We made that an alternate for you because we want to give you the option. If money starts getting short, that is something that we could throw overboard. The salicyne protects you for about ten years and then you'd have to redo that or not. We don't say that it's a nice to have. It's not a gotta have. It looked like the way the finances looked and after speaking with Mr. Allen, it seemed like it would be a reasonable thing for us to do that. So we added it to our recommendation, bringing it to two-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand-two-hundred-and-ten dollars. We are recommending that you carry a ten-thousand-dollar contingency because this project does have demolition in it. Demolition sometimes reveals things that there's no way for us to know about. And when it reveals things that we don't know about, we don't want you thinking that you're done at two-seventy-nine, two-ten. We need to carry that ten-thousand dollars. I'm not overly concerned that we're going to have to spend that money, but it's just good business practices for you not to be overextended. So that's how we, that's where we are and how we got there. And we can get into the weeds on the technical part of it all. You want to and look at the drawings and go through that.
I just have a question on the bids. I know you said you've worked extensively with J.J. Morley, but just looking at them compared to the others, the next highest bid, it looks like they're still about twenty percent under them, and then the highest bid is up, I mean that's about fifty percent.
Yes, sir.
So was that gap just the interpret expectation of kind of some of these things that aren't specified exactly?
No, sir. This is more of a we can situation. It's very market-driven and it's a lot about the money, is what it is. And J.J. Morley wanted the job and the others didn't. I don't think we have much of an interpretation profit. We run through them real quick. Metro waterproofing is very familiar with my requirements. Southern preservation is pretty understanding and they've got a pretty good idea of that. Structural restoration, not so much. And waterproofing contractors, even, is very familiar. And those were kind of the core bids, and then we had outliers up and down. And so I don't feel like we had a, I don't feel like we got a goat roping as far as the interpretation of what was supposed to happen. I think we have some healthy profit margins is what we have.
Yeah.
And more power to them.
They're busy.
Hey, we have more power to you. It's your job to make money. It's our job to get the best deal we can.
Speak briefly to the funding. Now, this is the building in our joint projects agreement. The auditorium is a common area and these kinds of costs are to be shared fifty-fifty with the city of Thomiston. So I've been in touch with them from get-go. They got everything Jody sent me, so they're in the know. And Kyle McGee actually was at, came with a free bid and made it. I wasn't there for the bid open, but he was involved. So they committed to us a couple of months ago. They said they would help us with this project, so I'm relying on that. So our cost, total cost on it will be half of that. The other thing, too, is that this is just exterior. We'll have to reach out and find other companies to help us with redoing the interior of the auditorium. So Jody's expertise is exterior and group. And I just let you know, he is also working with the sheriff and his folks. I think they went out this morning. He wanted them to come and take a look at the roof to see what was going on upstairs. I don't know all of the matters that the sheriffs handled that with them, so I don't know what that outcome will be. And Jody, when he was under Edifice, they're the ones that helped us with the signature that we were.
Question.
All right, so I know it's joint project. Is this going out of FOS or is this going out?
Oh, it would be funded out of our twenty-twenty-two.
And is y'all's contract, is it with us directly?
It's with us.
So would that cost be a fifty-fifty?
It is. So I've sent them a bill for his bills. We paid them already, but I'm seeking reimbursement for half of it.
And to be clear, we are third-party consultants. We don't proof, we don't waterproof, we don't take money from manufacturers, we don't take money from contractors. We, our fiduciary duty is directly to you and only to you, just to be clear. There's people that kind of dabble in those and we do not do that.
Also, too, I'll mention they're helping us with the archives. That's an issue there. So quite involved and I'm thankful to have that.
We maintain a lot of.
Not a contractor that's come out. I don't have to worry about any issues there. And he's independent and they're pretty tough. They're the tough one, the guys that did the roofing and signature, making sure they got the job done right. That's all that.
We don't have any confusion about who we work for. We don't have any confusion about who we work for.
So it would be our desire to have this on the consent agenda for approval with the recommendations that our consultants stated.
Yes, sir. And where we, do you want to get into where we go from here? Does anybody want to hear that?
Sure.
Assuming you approve it, what will happen next is we'll notify the low bidder that is successful, bidder that they are successful. We'll require submittals from them, which are in the packet. Those will come to us and we'll review those and make sure that everything they're using and everything that they're doing is what we ask. They have to, the submittal pack's basically required. They prove that what the materials that they're using meet our requirements. They submit a schedule, the bonding, the insurance, all that. We'll get all that packet together and then once we approve all that, then we'll set a start date. We'll do a pre-construction meeting on site with Mr. Allen's folks and the contractor. And we're out about every other day to check on them. We write a report with three photos and a summary of what happened that day. That continues until the end of the project. Contractor declares that he is finished, then we'll do a final inspection, produce a list of deficiencies. Those will be published. The contractor will complete that deficiencies list. We will sign off over however many visits it takes to do that. It averages about two and a half on these kind of projects. We'll declare that it's done. We'll collect the warranties from them. And when we have all the warranties that are required in the documents and have closed out the project, then we'll notify the unit it's done and we'll sign the pay application. All the pay applications on projects like this flow through us. They are sent to my office. We'll have somebody in the field check it and we'll have somebody inside of the office in the county check to make sure the arithmetic is correct. We send it over to Mr. Allen. We have approved it prior to him approving it and then he'll sign and pay it. And the pay apps go out. We'll hold a retention until the end and then when they are final, final done and we have the closeout package, then we'll release the final payment to them. And that's how that just flows from here.
It's all work and warrant.
Yes, sir. It's all warranted to bear in degrees.
Right, right.
And you'll have a shingle warranty, you have a metal finish warranty, you have warranties on all the materials and the installation for the masonry and the window seals, metal, metal, metal glass, on and on.
Okay, so roughly a hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars across.
All right. Our thoughts to the consent agenda, the consent agenda, can we discuss it?
Is the city going to do the same, put it on there?
That's it.
We'll find out.
We'll find out.
It would probably make sense if they approved.
What do you think about completion today from start to finish?
Looks like a couple of months to me. So it's like an eight, it looks like an eight-week deal.
How would that impair public employee parking, moving around the building? Are they going to have to block off certain areas?
Yes, sir. Part of the pre-construction meeting, there'll be a diagram of the building and the park facilities and y'all, they will agree, we'll all agree on what they're going to do on the staging and when. And I can tell you, we talked about all that. One of the great parts about this auditorium, according to Mr. Allen's folks, is that we don't have to maintain both sides as far as a point of egress because that section is not used by the public. So what we'll do is we'll do one side and we'll block that set of doors, block the access. We'll finish that side and then we'll move and block the other side as far as a point. That's going to be your main thing is the doors out. If we weren't able to do that, we would require the contractor to tunnel. They'd have to build a tunnel over the entranceway and allow the public. Now, this contract is written and these documents are written, this is an occupied space. So it's not a thing where they shut your building down and they get to hold it and hold it hostage and keep it and do things. They have to work around the public in the building. But then we gave them the guidelines, I think in the Q and A on the building, we talked, we addressed that and called it out. But there'll be, it's a construction project. I mean, you don't want them if they're giving them away. There'll be a relative, some annoyance, but it's going to be relatively low on this. There's not a lot that goes on inside there for the noise situation, which is always good because there's going to be some grinding and pounding. And it's not anybody's office. It's a stage area and then the auditorium. And then I want to speak to one other quick thing, and we won't be involved in the interior, but we do want to point out to you that part of your problem, and I didn't catch this, Bryce McQueen, the big daddy rabbit with Merrick, came down and looked at this after the fact, but he stated that the interior had been painted with a non-vapor permeable coating or paint and that had trapped the moisture inside the stucco and that had exacerbated what you did. So when you do your restoration, the only thing we have to say about that is use something vapor permeable so that any water that does get into the stucco can get back out, and we think you'll have a better outcome. And like Forrest Gump said, that's all I got to say about that. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hey, I appreciate it. Thank y'all for having us and we appreciate the business and I'll be at the sheriff's office on official business, not locked up, if you need me.
Sound good.
Thank y'all. Have a safe trip.
Thank you.
The first quarter, twenty-five financial report.
All right, I'm ready.
Just to tee this up for Allen, some of the other board members may or may not know that we kind of utilized the, this moment in time to do some additional sit downs with our newer commissioners. So Allen and I met individually with the chairman and then with Commissioner Biggs in advance of the meeting. So they've seen all this in advance and we sort of gave them the 101 about how our finance system works and how it may compare to others. So we've, just so the other board members know, they've already seen this and make lays over as Allen goes over it again, but.
We knew it was twenty-twenty-five, right?
Yes, sir. The first quarter, twenty-five financial. All right, I'm ready.
Yeah, so remember, this is pro-style.
Very first thing is, and I think I've tried to, but I want to make sure I do a better job going forward, is, and it's for the public sake as well, is that kind of highlight for you in a big picture, what we're responsible for in terms of budgeting and what we want to focus on every, after every quarter in terms of reporting to the board. All of those funds you see, and I have them color-coded, are the funds that we have to or required to prepare annual budgets for. You won't see the FOS capital fund because we're not required by law to prepare a capital budget, although nothing prevents us from, and we really should, prepare capital budgets. You can see in the pie chart, you know, the general fund by and large is the largest fund. I go this extra mile because we are a little different, are unique, if you will, because of joint projects. In most cases, in counties our size, practically everything would be in the general fund. Little different from us. We've got general fund, we have a joint projects fund, 911, recs, world above, in separate funds. I group those together. That's what the discussion's going to be about. Oh, I'm sorry. That's what the discussion's going to be about going forward, to focus on that top gray blocks. That's where all of our people are. So that's why I spend our time discussing those funds. Next page, page two. All I'm doing here is just really giving you a comparative of where we were last year, the end of the first quarter, compared to this year, the end of the first quarter. They're about the same. We're at right about twenty-one, almost twenty-two percent. It's never going to be exactly perfect, but just in terms of our, the funds and where we are budgeted actual, two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four. There again, I'm focusing on those, what I call the primary major funds that we, our primary operating funds. Just also to remind you, and anybody listening, we are discussing joint projects. We are sharing those costs with the city of Thomiston. The city of Thomiston is funding thirty-two percent of those joint projects. So when you look at that, we're not bearing, I say we, our joint projects millage is not bearing all of that cost. The city's joint project, the city contributes to the funding. They send us checks every month toward these joint projects based off the budgets we build and then they, you know, approve. All right, page three. I got a couple of little pop-outs to the side. This is, these are all of those four operating funds combined. And then I've got the expenditures broken out by main operating class. So no surprise, shouldn't be, anyone that personnel services and employee benefits is the largest classification of expenditure that we have. We are on track at twenty-seven percent. There's nothing in turn. At that, at this level that we're looking at budgets actual, just jumping off the page like, whoa, we're going way over already at the first quarter. Capital outlays, it looks like it, but we're talking, those are small dollars. We didn't budget much for capital outlay in these funds, but we did some in certain funds. And these are small dollars, like if we have to go by, you know, we budget for purchase of a computer or a budget for purchase of a desk. These aren't large capital. That's all handled with FOS. See the pop-out box there on salaries and benefits? Again, sixty-three point eight percent of our budget is compensation related. Purchase contracted services, that's a mouthful. That encompasses a whole lot. And, you know, these categories emanate from the Georgia, Georgia has a basic chart of accounts and we go by those. You will see these same categories repeated again on our annual financial report. But when Jason and I were going over this, he said, hey, how about popping out to the side and show the top five of purchase contracted services? So EMS being one point two million. The, our insurance, property and casualty, the three-hundred-and-eighty-two thousand is in that bucket. Medical care, that's for jail, three-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand. Software licenses, that's for everybody. You know, every system that we use, every department, including the 911 systems are captured there on the software licenses. These would be the license renewals and I always use that other term that we use nowadays. Contract labor, that's the justice center. That's, is what's in the budgeted amount. That's your, basically your cleaning services for contract labor. So I've got the pie chart at the bottom that breaks that out and gives you. Now, the pie chart's a little different where the top table shows you budget actual and then percent of the budget. Pie chart shows you the same, actually is giving you the percent of budget for twenty-five and twenty-two.
All right, so what are other costs?
Other costs are primarily, that category includes debt service, if any, and that service wouldn't be included in here, and the bulk of it is payment to other governments and agencies. So the big chunk of that is payment to public defender, person judicial circuit, DA.
And just out of curiosity, I see percent of budget is sixty-four percent for personnel services and employee benefits. How is that comparable to other counties? Is that a form? I mean, I don't know.
Personal costs are. An analytic to tell you for sure, I would say that, you know, just talking with people being through training courses is always the largest portion of their budgets, but percentage, I couldn't tell you offhand.
I could certainly expound on that. Some, where it really makes a difference is that we have every penny available by law in sales tax. So therefore, in these funds, it makes sense that we have a higher percentage of personnel versus anything else. So a community that doesn't have all the sales taxes that we have would probably have a lower percentage of personnel because they're having to do more through the millage rate, less through the tax, less through the sales tax. So I would say we are on the higher end of personnel costs in our, just because we take advantage of every sales tax that there is.
Interesting. All right.
Page, any other questions? Page four. I'll talk a little bit just briefly about positions. That's something that I know the chairman has mentioned. Obviously, we know the driver of our budgets, compensation cost, and give you a look at what, this is not a historical look, no. This is what we currently have and what we budgeted for in twenty-twenty-five. You can see the total countywide positions are two-hundred-and-forty-three. That includes full-time and part-time personnel and also includes, like if you're looking at culture and recreation, that's going That includes full time and part time, uh, personnel, um, and, uh, also includes, like, if you're looking at culture and recreation, uh, that's gonna include summertime help or pool and things. That doesn't have that big of an impact on our budget. Uh, there's also, you know, there's others that have a little more impact, that's what we call the full time part timers. Uh, the seasonal work, it's, it doesn't really have much of an impact. Uh, to give you an idea on the averages, so these are just all full time salary averages. Uh, if you looked at our entire government and looked at, um, what we budgeted for the year, our total government wide, this does not include, let me say, does not include proprietary funds. So it doesn't include water, but water's not much different. Again, I'm just focusing on the governmental budget. All governmental fifty one thousand. I've actuated the constitutional officers out of that, constitutional average is ninety, ninety thousand.
That's for officers only, not their employees, right?
And I, that's correct, and I say constitutional, I should have said elected, so these are elected, all elected officials. Department heads, that's, um, everybody that's not associated with the sheriff's department, so that's all of the department head average. The sheriff, um, lieutenant and captain, um, levels, that's a little bit different than what we have, you know, in terms of ranking, but that's seventy six thousand. Patrol and non officer, meaning like, I categorize sergeants through just, um, patrol officers, fifty one thousand. And then all other non sheriff staff, um, the average is forty, almost forty three thousand. Pointed officers and CFO, hundred twenty nine thousand, average. So those are, if you just slice into this deeper, but it kind of, that's the way I broke it out and tried to give you some idea, you know, because we do have, I hate to, we have different classifications of personnel, obviously, with the sheriff's department and all. Constitutional officers are a little different. And I show this in terms of, uh, in the pie chart, the numbers of positions, uh, percentage wise and, uh, where it lays out, you know, based on function. Um, you see public safety is the dark green, these colors are hard to, a little difficult, we try to, I try to make that better, um, but public safety is your, your dark green area.
And public safety is essentially the sheriff's department.
It is, but it's gonna include animal control and AMA, yes. Okay.
Alright, uh, so here we say we budgeted for sixteen vacancies, so that means you budgeted those positions at fifty percent of.
That's correct.
The cost.
Yes.
And through the first quarter, we had twenty three vacancies?
We still, as of the day I was, back, uh, late April, at that point in time, we, we had twenty three countywide vacancies.
So what does that equate to in higher lag? I'm looking for some money for hiring.
I think I thought you were looking for a percentage.
You know where I'm going. So you can see, you know, eight of those vacancies are public safety. I would say that when you're looking at the sheriff's office especially, when they're short, I'm sure there are savings there because their position's unfilled, but that you're also running overtime. So, but we could probably get.
Most of the. I'm at all.
So the, the shifts are getting filled, it's just being, um, overtime.
I will say too, we, um, and he gave it over quite nicely, but we, we kind of took, uh, a gentleman by the name Toby from recreation because we were using him. Uh, and, uh, when another gentleman we had in, uh, facilities went on, uh, leave for his mother, but he decided not to come back. So, uh, Brian and I discussed it, so we're, we keep Toby as a replacement, he gave it up, so we stole one from him.
Nice.
Anyway, but you know where I was going with that?
You're looking for some money.
We can talk about it later.
Okay, page five.
I gotta get with Paul, see if I can find the money when I can get it back on that agenda.
I just don't want to get shocked to my car.
That's the right way to do it, so you gotta figure it out.
Uh, okay, um, we're, what the, oh, this is, I was talking positions before, then we're talking dollars.
I mean, throw you off.
No, 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 sir, it's fine, it's not gonna be much different in terms of percentages. But, um, there, there's a little bit of a emphasis on this and I'm really doing that for the benefit for the newer, um, uh, board members, uh, in terms of just kind of giving you a better look at and then for the public of just how much of our budget is dedicated to, um, public safety and, uh, how much of it is for constitutional officers. So, um, but anyway, you can see how the pie, pie slices down, um, public safety, you know, forty three point nine percent of our budget is in public safety. So, general government, that's all of us, um, in admin and many other areas under general government, that's nineteen percent. So elections, finance, admin, IT, et cetera. I made a little blowout down here at the bottom, a little total, fifty six point three percent of the total budget of the county's main operating funds is made up of public safety and judicial, so we combine those. Uh, that's fifty six percent of our total budget. Page six. I drill in a little bit more, um, focusing on constitutional officials or constitutional late officials and government agencies. So what I've incorporated here are all of those departments, including, um, I, we use the terminology of judicial and bailiff. That's really where your, your Griffin judicial circuit is, that's where your probate, your district attorney, um, not probate, excuse me, your district attorney, your public defender, that's where those cost or how in that, that big bucket. If you jail, sheriff, nine one one, probate courts, SROs, et cetera. So fifty one point eight percent of the county's main operating budget is comprised of appropriation for the offices of late officials, say they, you know, you do, um, so we've got the coroner in there as well. Transportation services provided through Three Rivers, um, and we don't fund that and, um, so, any questions?
Four of Greece offices, I mean, they're on work, how they suck their money out so fast?
How they, see, they probably pay, um, I think we're done for the year, yeah, uh, we pay a one time annual. Okay, next page, let's just dash, we're talking about cash a little bit and wrap this up. Uh, what you have at the top, those are the balances as of April twenty third, um, and to the right, to the left column is where we were April, where we were April twenty three, to, to the left, excuse me, what did I say? To the left is twenty three, to the right is year end. So, uh, anything on the balance sheet is just a snapshot in time, uh, the balance can be totally different the next day. So that's, that's where we sit, same funds compared to side by side, uh, you know, we're always biggest in cash at the very end of the year. And so for our fiscal year, is most of our tax revenues are coming in November and December. Then we have to start paying the bills and, and so the money goes back out and, uh, cash won't, you know, go down, uh, over that period of time. What I'm doing at the bottom table is I'm projecting, um, and I did throw in capital in these cases. So just what I've done is I've, this is a combination, these tables are the combinations of our SLOSS, uh, capital projects funds and the debt service funds. Because our two SLOSS that we have now that are left, twenty twenty fourteen SLOSS and twenty twenty two SLOSS, both of those SLOSS are tied with, um, debt issuance or bonds. So I combined the funds, because what happens is we have a debt service fund, when we collect those sales taxes, we have to hold enough back to make our principal and interest payments on the debt. We also have to share with the city, but anything above that, we can use for capital purposes, so I, I collect the two. So all of the project funds as of now, Vince, um, which we expect to twenty twenty two SLOSS, the debt issuance, that's been spent on justice center. What we're getting now, those are, um, the sales tax revenues are coming in. I just give you a balance and then I'm projecting for you the year end balances of each of those, capital related, um, I, LMA does include the LRA, I can show you on the next page. But, um, so, you know, I want to try to do this, uh, to some fashion for you, if I can possibly monthly, just have at least cash, so you know, when you're like, well, how much do we have funding to do this or, et cetera. Uh, the back page is just a little bit of the drill in and to how I'm forecasting those balances. Now, I say forecasting, let me say, I, if, if we don't have a project on the books or plan to have it, I'm not projecting anything. I'm just, what we have showing as debt service or the, um, pay distributions to the city of Thomaston, that's obviously based on current, I'm kind of forecasting that. But when it comes to like, uh, the encumbrances, that's just the projects that we have left. So if you look at the twenty T SLOSS, the encumbrance there, the remaining left on the contracts with the current road work that we have going on plus, and it's a, an expected two million dollar cost for Jeff Davis.
Yes, yes.
So I did do that, although technically that project hasn't been lived, just for the sake, kind of give us a better picture of where we're sitting in terms of monies available for future road work. That includes both work going on with Robinson and the future Jeff Davis project.
Roughly eight hundred and fifty thousand of that two billion dollar project is.
That's right.
LMA.
And that is reflected, that's a nice segue if you go down, that kind of include the, uh, cash sources and uses. We've got the beginning balance of, um, helmet, there's still three hundred thousand we, project we've got to get going for, at some point, for restructuring, we've been there. There, there are the LA, LRA funds which came in, so to be actually preparing this, and, uh, that's showing in the encumbered line. So the only thing left will be out of, left out of LMA unless we, um, yeah, so, yeah, we'll have an ending balance of zero, because it is an encumbered already, three hundred thousand, honestly. But, um, and I've got a note out to the side here, right? Alright. Just real quickly go over the proprietary funds, I kind of want to sneak in a little something, um, because we're going to talk about budget amendments for twenty twenty four. But, um, I, I do want to also request a budget amendment, uh, for twenty twenty five for the water and solid waste departments. I have that in the, um, pop out here down at the bottom. The Thurston, well, we only had five hundred and sixty five thousand budgeted in for the water department for capital expenditure. Uh, and then when we were budgeting back then, we didn't know what the total cost of the well project was gonna be, we have that now. There's, there's sufficient funds sitting in solid waste department and we're never going to use anything there for capital. So I'm just going to submit a budget amendment to transfer those funds, uh, the four hundred and sixty five thousand rest of it over to the water fund to help pay for all of the Thurston project versus dipping in the, we can use SLOSS, but we have accumulated sufficient fund balance, if you will, in these proprietary funds, we should use it. That's, that's my goal, so instead of using the SLOSS.
But keep in mind, that capital budget for twenty five was the, um, rehab of the lift station for Lincoln Park.
That's right.
Which we'll probably, we're even talking about that today on our agenda, so.
So.
So with the, it would require, if we, if we did it this way, we would have to amend it again if we did that.
Yeah, for, for that process, right. See, we haven't, you know, I have to make sure we've got sufficient amount in the solid waste, I don't know what that would cost on the lift station.
Yeah, I think that's whatever, that estimate is what.
Is that one, okay. For memory, thank you. So, as I shared with, uh, um, Chairman Brew and Commissioner Biggs, uh, last week, I believe it was, a week before, proprietary funds are prepared on a different accounting basis, so fund balance isn't technically the appropriate term to use. Um, but I calculated the fund balance in December for you to show you, uh, that is simply just the assets, cash and receivables less current liability. And so that's where we were at that point in time. So we've got water, we've got, uh, solid waste. Any questions? Great, alright, let's move on to twenty twenty four. Uh, I won't read this for the second time, um, if you want to go back and read that.
I've read it.
So, you know what we have to do, everybody knows by law, we have to have a balanced budget. By law, uh, believe it or not, we have to have a balanced budget all the way down, the level of detail that we have to go down to is to the department level. We can go lower if the board wants to, of course, it's law. So we have to have a balanced budget from a budget perspective, and then we have to make sure that our, uh, actual expenditures during the year or at the end of the year don't exceed appropriation at each department. If we don't do, come back and do amendments after we've closed books and everything, then the auditors write up a nice little thing and stick it inside of our annual report. When the, uh, department of audits reviews our financials, they write us up and send it to us and say, don't let this happen again, we go through that. So, that's part of why I'm coming back to you, I will say there may be a few more, there will be a few more. And we'll probably have to do that concurrent with the auditors presenting the financials to you in the June meeting. So there are some items, flip on page two, we don't, you know, the accounting and everything for like the, uh, seizure fund and law library, um, jail, well, the shared program funds, they have all of that, they do all, they do their own buying, purchasing and collection of funds and recording transactions. The auditors will ask for certain information, they would do some audit work on that activity and then they basically tell us the numbers. It's not the first way to do it, but it's done that way just about in every county, um, because, uh, uncertain of these funds are maintained, um, that, you know, these are not, of course, taxpayer funds, these are funds that, that are built up over time through fines, et cetera. So that's why you'll have some of that coming back, if there's a major miss or something about us, the auditor sketch and we have to make a big adjustment, then I might have to add that too, so. Alright, flip fast, uh, just some, uh, nice charts and stuff, we can, um, breeze past that. I'm just giving you a year over year look, the one thing I want to point, just want, two important things to point out. If you look at all of our operating, basic operating funds, um, our budget to actual for the year, uh, we were under budgeted, uh, about six hundred forty four thousand one hundred and ten dollars for, uh, twenty twenty four. Uh, we were under about, about one point one million last year of our total budget expenditures. Don't get me wrong, don't misunderstand, being under budgeted on expenditures doesn't necessarily mean that we didn't incur a deficit someplace because we're under on revenues. You know, um, if we don't collect the amount of revenues that we say maybe budgeted for, for various reasons, including mileage rate, we still could have a, a deficit in a particular fund. Okay, I just do that for every fund, I give you a pie chart and we can move through those. This, this all is a mouthful, um, what I've done, starting first, just laying out the general fund by department, um, to kind of go through and discuss with you briefly and very quickly, the reasons for, the major reasons for the, um, uh, being over budget. I will tell you upfront, this is not uncommon, you will see, uh, where, say maybe the sheriff's office within his sheriff's patrol department, he may be way over budget, which he is, but he's way under budget. That's happens because within his office, he moves personnel, he loses people, switches people and maybe, uh, somebody's got to come off school resource officer, he moves a body from patrol. That information doesn't always get to us that time. So in our system, we're still charging payroll expenditures to, uh, patrol when those persons are over in school resource office. Now, we do. Now, we do keep an active list, because we communicate with him, of names. Now, who's in S R O, because we do build the city.
School board.
School board, where do I get that from? The school board, uh, does compensate us for seventy-five percent of our total personnel costs. We're going to do a better job of just making sure we sync up with H R whenever those personnel changes happen and try to stop some of that, but when, from his perspective, it's his whole department. So one thing I have to throw in here, what's not presented on this page, nine-one-one. So if you took all of his departments, nine-one-one, S R O, patrol, jail, he's under budget in total. But it jumps off the page as you hear presented, you know, separately. Admin finance, we incurred higher legal and consulting fees, part of it, big part of it, was consideration of the hospital bond. Um, so, uh, we incurred more costs there. Uh, we had some folks that were contributing more than they were in the prior year towards their four oh one for, uh, to their, um...
Four fifty-seven.
Thank you, yeah, and the match went up, uh, yeah. Uh, tax commissioner, you know, uh, and you can see the dollar amounts, but, uh, higher tax digest fees and postage, tax assessor, we have slightly higher salaries resulting in not budgeting for assessor's board. Uh, we did include the assessor's board compensation cost in that, uh, which is an error. And, uh, there was a slightly higher increase in the chief of prays' salary than what we budgeted. Uh, the increase recommended to us, uh, approved by his board, was higher than what they had told us when we were going through the budget process. Public buildings, we had a lot of things break last year, uh, a lot, and we did a lot of, uh, repair and maintenance. If you noticed, around the building, hopefully it is looking better to you. Uh, a lot of paint was done on railings, and we had fascia boards around the, um, the, uh, great building that were rotting, we replaced all of those pressure-washed side bulbs, painted all the lampposts black, they were faded green, um, and, and on and on. Uh, we did have increases in supplies, not a huge amount, but because of the justice center, we had about twenty-two, twenty, twenty-two thousand higher in, uh, utilities costs just for justice center at that period. Um, act he was a little higher on compensation than we budgeted, but, um, that was, uh, the director completed his courses, uh, I forget the program that he was involved in, but he got all of his kids. Um, and the, the result of this increase was a little higher than we had that budgeted for.
And as a reminder, we, we suspended those increases for twenty-five.
Yes. Elections were a little over. We had, you know, we know last November with the presidential election, a lot was going on, and the governor asked, I believe, added one additional Saturday, uh, for voting, so we incurred more costs on the election side as a result. Shop, we could have adjusted this part of our closing, we chose not to. Anything that's, uh, allowable under the law, under T S P O's, that's transportation-related, we can use T S P O's funds. We have to pay for some of the lubricants and stuff out of their operating budget. And we do do that, but we always, because it's difficult now with that money sitting in a corporate trust, we have to have one of you guys sign off and send it upstream to San Obus, and we just reimburse the operating funds when the monies come back. Uh, we did, and that's why, I think we're about twenty-two thousand higher than what we budgeted for shop. All right, boil it all down, in total, um, and that archives boxes in the wrong place. Uh, it shouldn't be down here by the archives, which is a separate joint project. The only department in the joint projects fund that was over was related to archives. Uh, and, uh, most of that was basement flooding.
Yeah.
Uh, and getting all that sucked out, uh, cleaned up. But if you look, here we are, general fund, we're under budget in total by a hundred and forty-nine balance, so.
Can I ask a question?
Yep, yes, sir.
All right, real quick, boy, I'm counting down the head.
Okay.
I'm just looking at, utilities increased by twenty-five thousand dollars. How, how, I mean, that ought to be a fairly easy thing to budget for.
Yeah.
History there, you got, what happened, I mean?
So what, what happened was, we had been expensing those costs of a facilities department as opposed to breaking them out and reporting them or recording them in that particular department, because we have a separate department just for county parks. And so that was all hitting in Paul's budget. So during the year when we recognized that, we're like, hey, that needs to be spent in separate apartment, um, because it's separate from the main public buildings. We're mostly gathered utilities cost or captured in Paul's budget. Um, so, and it also gives us a better look on, you know, what it is costing us in terms of just making utilities.
And any square above part of the county, is there utilities blocked off into that? I'm just finding hard to figure out what twenty-five thousand dollars about county parks. It's, I mean, it's, it's pretty minimal what our, uh, uh, parks have, with the exception of the bluff, it's more.
The bluff utilities would be in the bluff's, uh, fund.
Separate fund, yeah.
Separate fund.
Twenty-five thousand, boy, no, man, that's probably. Well, it's, it's never, it's never been in their budget before, that's, yeah, so.
Yeah, that's what's.
But that moved from where?
From facilities.
Facilities department, which, yeah, it's in the same fund, it's just if you looked at this, um...
So that's a public building department?
That's correct.
I thought it went up too.
Well, remember, that includes Lincoln Park. They have a facility.
But that facility is leased.
But not in twenty-four. Was it all in twenty-four?
Uh, yeah, this is just. Yeah, we, so, facilities captures most of the utilities for a public building, but in this case, I mean, the cap... And the reason, you know, for the county parks is, we track that separately, I see. Is one thing was, we were trying to avoid having those costs captured up through the city center and joint project. So we wanted to isolate just those parts that, you know, is not joint project. That's not, you're supposed to pay for the expenses. So we budgeted in twenty twenty-four, we didn't include the utilities costs, because it was stuck up under, um, public buildings.
Right, but under public buildings, awesome, I don't see a twenty-five decrease, there's still another twenty-eight thousand increase for utilities.
Uh, okay, let me, let me go back and watch what that. Put me to where you, sort of what page you're?
Uh, page eleven, general, public buildings, uh, their mine utilities increased twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Right. So what I'm doing, what I'm doing in the pocket.
Just in one lap?
So just, we started, took on the facilities in about, um, I think it was, uh, July?
Yeah.
So.
That was still, and so we were paying, um, we've, yeah, maybe a little later than that, but that's was construction around the justice center, yeah.
Right.
Okay, captured that this year, was this your budget?
We did.
Ho- hopefully well.
Well, I, I will tell you, we're flipping up the utilities year-over-year, so from twenty-two to twenty-three, our utilities costs in total went up like fifteen percent. In twenty-three to twenty-four, they went up about another five or six percent, I believe, if I recall the figures off the top of my head. That has nothing to do with the number of buildings, just rates. Plus, if you think, and we're about to get into it, last year was a rough summer, and it stays hot for a long time, and these things run, and run, and run. And so, uh, it, it, it costs a lot of money.
I don't want you to get out of line here, I won't go through this, but I, I, I think just as a, as a, you know, not a right-of-way guy to do the type of thing, but, but I might be the only, I would just like to say in the near future, I'd outline what parts we're paying for, and, and a history of, well, let's say, a, a twenty-four month history of captured of what, that those utilities are. So if I can get a better understanding.
We can do that.
And it is not priority, I'm, that, just, just me, I don't know if anybody else about that, but I think I'd like to do that.
Sure. Well, if you're doing it, we're not like, sure.
All right, I guess we'll show it to everybody.
You want it too, huh? So we'll, we can outline all the utilities for all the buildings and parks, so. So that, when I say utilities, water and electricity typically, but some of our buildings on our main lot, we've got gas, um, so involved too.
Well, and, 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 and this goes a lot deeper than just this, I mean, we, we need to look at some of the buildings that we're looking at to consolidate and, and things like that, so we can start getting our head wrapped around dollars that we're going to be able to save.
Right.
Because we need to talk about that, the public.
Yep, absolutely. I agree. Okay, so all I'm doing, the, the last couple pages, which you all, uh, jumped to. That's, that, my plan is to include this at the back of the resolution, you know? And, and it's, um, down to a level of just account, not account number, but account name. And so what I do, and if you look, I start with the general fund. I'm taking from one department and putting in another to balance the whole fund and to make sure each department's, uh, expenditures don't exceed appropriations. I didn't put a grand total for you, but if you look, if you look at shares, the total amendments, I'm going to increase these various expenditures by four hundred and eleven thousand in total, and I'm going to decrease, uh, vice control, which is, um, our, um...
Task force.
Uh, thank you. The S R O, I'm going to decrease all those line items, and E M S, uh, we, uh, got an over budget of about forty-five thousand on that. So that's all I'm doing, is moving.
But when you're done, you're still plus money.
Yes. We're, we're under budget.
That's right, still plus money, still under budget.
Okay.
Yeah, so all it is, is just tidying up things. And the last, so, um, you won't think I was trying to fool you, these last funds, it is a budget increase as a fund. Hotel motel, um, we collected more taxes, so that we budgeted, and we have to distribute those. So what we have is, I've got a line item there, says impact in budget, same thing on debt service for two thousand nineteen. Uh, that's really related to, uh, the intergovernmental payment to the city of Tompkins, and I had not, I did not budget in twenty-four. We did have to make one final payment to them. Um, telecom, that's not, telecom is a pass-through fund I set up. Those monies that we're getting from the state that went directly to Highline, they actually passed through our bank accounts. Um, I didn't want that passing through the general fund, because the years that we were doing that project would have made our general fund look weird. And so I set up a separate fund just to pass that through, that's all that is. Um, state money going directly to Highline. Uh, and a couple of debt service funds, just to bulk those up, and that's all it is. So, yeah, operating budgets, we're not increasing those at all. I'm, well, I'm almost done. No, no, I'm done.
I, so, just real quick, I want to interject this, I, I have a question, and it's more gets for staff. I know what the answer is on my side, but, so, when a non-constitutional body comes before us and we approve a increase in that department, this board approves that increase. If they submit paperwork for that increase to be different other than what we approved, should that not owe red flags and just say, stop, this is not what you, you have approved, and that we can't move forward until this is resolved? Are you seeing line item budgeting? No, when, when, so, when you come and ask for an increase on, in the budget for salary increase, okay? And then when paperwork is submitted, because we have an overage, okay, we have an overage in, in one of our departments, uh, that a board oversees that department, and they came in and asked for a certain percentage of an increase, and then obviously it appears that the increase was different than what they, what, that they came to us and asked us to approve. It was higher. So how did it go forward, I mean?
I think, uh, well, for example, um, the tax assessor office.
I was trying to be generic, but, you know, I mean, it's saying.
It, it happened a couple of years, I mean, uh, most of the time, there's, um, it's so small that you, they come in under budget in other areas, so you know department-wide, they're not going to vote budget. Uh, they were just flyover this year. Yes, we budgeted for what they say they think they're going to increase, but then they have a board that says, well, we want to go up. I don't know how to answer it.
Well, in, in, in some of those instances. Well, we, we, we did cover that in, but they changed to us with that. It's, it's part of the budget, Pope, and, and when we approved some, anything other than what we approved, outside of constitutional officer, we approved increases. Yes, so, so when we, when we determined that such a request, when it's made at the time, and it, this would not be a good example, because when we analyzed that request when it came through, it did not appear that it would have a negative effect on your budget. That, in combination with a, a few other things, did. So at that time, no, but, uh, in another department, when staff felt like it would have a significant impact, and if we require y'all to amend it, we brought it to you. So yes, we do bring it to you if we had, if we fear that it's going to have a significant impact. And that was in a constitutional office in twenty-four, that, where, where we had told the, that constitutional officer, hey, I, I'm not going to approve that, I need the board to approve that, so.
I, I think I'm with James on, on this. When it comes to individual personal salaries being adjusted in the department, um, outside of what was approved on the payroll increase, I, I think that requires true, because that could cause, uh...
But we also, but we also don't set, for that position, we don't set their salary, that board does.
But if we set the budget for that, um, they shouldn't see the budget that they have, they just, uh, partners out.
Well, like I said, at the, at the time.
I think that line item should be, like, locked.
Yeah. I'll let the attorney answer that, that's not the way I was trained, so.
Well, I think what you're saying, though, is, um, the budget, just use arbitrary numbers, is a hundred thousand.
Yeah.
And they were deficient in one area that, of the budget, and they increased their salary, so they really, at the time it was presented, it was going, it was not going to go over budget.
Yeah, I, I would have to pass them a copy of paper this year, so I would give, I would give someone a raise. But next year, you need copy of paper, you say you're going to come back and ask us for.
That, and the fact that that can be manipulated. If I want to give somebody a raise, I'm going to raise my copy of paper up, but my supplies tend to cover that, that compensation. I just, you know, I think we work really hard to try to keep up. It's been a long time ago, one of those salaries, it's, I think, I think we've run our employees a long way as far as compensation. Yeah, if, if you can be argued that, hey, we're still not there, okay, we all can argue that case. But I think that starts manipulating into the fact that, hey, this is, uh, I, I just, and, and I'm speaking non-constitutional here, I'm not talking about the, about the general. Well, in that particular office, you know, if you dig, if you dig into the law, into the statute, all of the members of that office do fall under our policies and procedures, and our guidelines are basically all of our, uh, pay classification plan except for that one position. So. So that is. It is held, and that's my question, is it held differently? So that one position, i- it's a contractual position with that board, and they set the salary.
But we approved the budget for that ahead of time.
Yeah.
It comes to change.
Well, you don't approve a budget for a specific salary.
Right.
Look for pay or contract.
But their level of control is department-level under that board.
Wow.
Yeah.
I think this is conversation with, uh, members of the board that might have been on that board.
Yeah, well, in that particular case, um, I'm, I met with that board chairperson and they, and had a conversation about it. I mean, but in the end, I don't control, this is the salary.
Why, just, you, you just transparent to talk to each other and know what's going on, I mean.
So you had that board check.
Something this board wouldn't have proved, I'd be like, yeah, I don't know. Okay.
I think that's all, maybe the truck.
How many more? That is the next agenda, but we have consensus that the amendments that you put forward, we'll, we'll speak to it on the... That is the next agenda, but we have consensus that the amendments that you put forward, we'll we'll speak to it on the consent agenda. We don't need any more. I'll leave you to debate.
I don't.
Yeah, you're talking about animal control.
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to.
It's next.
It's not me to control this. Float out.
We're waiting on you.
Is that airport coffee? Okay, the truck, um, all right, so I didn't, I I guess you all got electronic copy. I didn't have a lot of copies.
They have it.
Okay, so. We've concluded, so I'm pitching to the uh, you all. Um, we want to go with a slide in. That's what the animal control director wants to have. Uh, I reached out to a couple of more companies, found one, American aluminum slide in. Uh, they uh, Thomasin priority lighting solutions off of uh, Henry Road, are we here somewhere? They are a new.
Do you know my house?
Uh, aluminum sliding boxes are made by aluminum sliding, somewhere near Tampa, maybe the actual company. But they uh, will install the boxes, looking at these boxes and comparing them to the ones from Jones trailer. I mean, I can see them, they may not be that evident in these pictures, but they look to be of a much better quality.
Is that one fiberglass?
No, sir, you're thinking about bolt-on. This is a slot, these are slide in boxes. And you'll see the back, the big dogs, there's a um, there's actually a partition. So on the Jones trailers, they're bare bones and you have to add on additional um, options to get the separation for the two cages and the floor mats and the the fans and everything. So it's not ACs, but there is electrical fans just to keep air circulation inside the slide. Um, Adrian did reach out to, and I've got it to several other counties, and they had mentioned using, I'm putting on my sunglasses. They have mentioned using um, swap. Swap, but swap only does the bolt-on or bolt-in type boxes. But uh, he he did talk to Baldwin, Pope, Baldwin, Sumter counties. I did also reach out to um, Taylor, Tyler, uh, in Lamarke County, he used to be with us code enforcement. They found some boxes, but he only bought, they only bought two pit carrier, and they had some older ones that their shop or somebody made themselves. But he talked to all, he talked to a lot of these folks, including Jones trailer. And uh, he wasn't that impressed with Jones trailer. And so I felt better about going with the American aluminum because it is power coated aluminum. Um, Jones trailer steel or you can get stainless steel. It's just, you can just look at the quality difference. I don't have them here, so I'm sorry. Nobody gave me a better deal on trucks. And I gave all these folks a chance except for Speedway Ford. And I reconfirmed with her last week that we were still good at that price. Add on, uh, I think I did, add on like seven hundred dollars for the bed because the first price she quoted me, we were kind of going down that track of a bolt-on. And it's like seven hundred bucks, that's kind of shopping, that's the price for a bed. But uh, she had to add that bed pricing back. So we just asked for two trucks and one uh, slide in box.
And and we're recommending aluminum?
Uh, uh, yes, sir, the power coated aluminum with uh, uh, American aluminum. And they would ship that box here and we'd get it installed here at Thompson.
Fans? Is that what one of them?
It it should have, it has electric fan. I got the, all the details.
I was saying aluminum, have you ever went and touched aluminum to blocks on your truck, about a hundred degree weather? It's uh, very hot.
Um, would it be more quartz or less than steel?
I would ask this.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I mean, I, you know, I was passionate about the bolt-on kind, but.
That's what it was.
Animal control wanted to, because I mean, he made a great point and everybody I've talked to, and I'm talking to uh, I was talking to Tyler about it, um, he's like, hey, the box will outlast the truck. I can take the box off and put it in a new truck later on. I can't, the bolt-on's a bit different, you know, so. You can take the bolt-on off, but you gotta keep the bed somewhere in a garage, put the bed back on the truck, sell the truck, you know, with surplus.
And if they keep the same thing.
Correct, yes.
And they're they're turning around a whole lot quicker.
It is, he told me tw- what, twelve, fourteen weeks or so, and he he would work with the dealership so that as soon as the van is released on the truck, he could order the box. And so they arrive about the same time.
So how how do you get to this total cost here?
Two trucks.
Two.
Right, with one uh, uh, truck bed, let's just say eighteen plus eighteen five, and trucks are forty five, forty eight, so. No, we're gonna just keep it to one. It should be sufficient.
Okay, so it's an eight foot truck.
Yes, sir.
There's an eight foot bed.
Eight foot bed.
Yeah, I mean, eight foot.
Box, right, that's right, that knows anything. If everybody's reasonable, I mean, my recommendation obviously is, you know, allow us to come before you all, either in consent or however, approve the purchase so we can start that process. He has turned in vehicles and and has vehicles that he can turn over or turn in, um, on these trucks.
That meet or exceed.
Yes.
The policy requirements that he set a couple of years ago.
His trucks are. Other than one, he's got all.
Excellent.
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
I'm perfect. Talk about them. All right, we're back to buddy counter. You were here.
Um, we really wanted to get some input from the board. This 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 is uh, what the staff proposes, but we want, we need you to look at it and give us some feedback on it. We'd like to get it adopted at the next meeting, but we can, we can, we certainly don't need to, but having that guidance might be good.
The one area that I have to determine, that's um, you know, discussing with Jessica, you know, she has coordinated with you all on availability. So I didn't put hard dates there, but but, you know, a section at a time.
Wouldn't we do all these same time frame from last year?
It's uh, roughly the same timeframe yesterday. All right, it's it's backed up just a little bit, a little bit sooner in terms of the meeting and all. Um, in terms of the, I'm sorry, the, like, when I meet with you all, go over the first draft high level after we get the department heads inputs. Um, that's a week or two sooner than we did it last year. And uh, we had to delay some things. My mom passed, we had to delay some things last year too, so. So. We um.
So wait, you talk to them and you want something changed?
Correct.
You know, they don't knock us out of the saddle.
One one thing where I know we appreciate input too is um, and sooner the better on that, is that who would you like, and when we have the department heads come in and meet with you all in a public session? What departments do you want to come? All of them? Some of them? The larger ones, you know? Uh, in that way, we certainly have them prepped and ready to present to you what you want to hear from you and how you want it.
And also in the past, I think we've kind of put, we've kind of kind of huddled up and we've kind of made and discussed uh, our expectations.
Absolutely.
And.
That's what's most important.
Yeah, so. I I think if we don't go ahead and set those expectations, we may be, this this process may be longer because then maybe some wish lists get added to it. So I think we need to kind of set a goal and say, this is what we'll be.
And honestly, that's.
As soon as you work, work backwards.
Yeah. And that's what, that's really what made last year so smooth.
Right.
I mean, you know.
That might be something that we need to do before we give direction.
And it's not, it's notated on here on the counter about when you would, we just call it setting your priority. And then we we get you, we get you to adopt that before we start building it. And that was, and we've been doing that for four, four years now, and it's worked well for us. Did any, any concerns or recommended changes? And then I'm asking, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman of Staff too. Is that, is it okay the way it is? I understand that there's getting more detail because we will have, you know, individual meetings, but.
No, it's not for me on the operating. I I don't know. You all may remember, we did do this in twenty twenty four, not twenty twenty five. We do need to come back to you all. I can't say June, because that's right around the corner. Here we are in May. But we need to come back to you with an updated five year capital plan. But we do, I would hope, I I should say we should. Uh, my recommendation is that not only do the capital planning, but capital budgeting. And it does get really tight with time. I'm doing, you got to operate it, and then you have cap, if we can capital budget, we can do that at a different time. We we can say we can do capital budgets from September to, you know, September. Um, that helps because we can, I can come to you all with requests for trucks and whatever we need to buy or building something. And then it can all be hashed out. You decide whether we do it or we don't do it then, and then we can budget for that. So the next step really is not whether we need to do it or not, it's me coming and say, okay, we went through everything for policy. We did everything procurement like we should, we got competitive bids, and it's just that process. And everything twenty five thousand more has to be approved by the board anyway, procurement standpoint. Uh, you know, and and it helps out if we can get to that point, but it is a lot, it's a lot of time because operating is enough of a challenge, but.
So it's a five year capital.
We do have five years.
So we're looking at life cycle of equipment, whether it's vehicles or whatever, and programming. And this year we suspect we're going to need to replace this many vehicles or this much IT correct or whatever, you know? It's kind of a capital fund basically splashed.
Correct.
Well, and you have a large part of your capital plan that's unfunded. So, you know.
I I I would recommend.
Seventy percent.
That we probably have that discussion and only that discussion in some type of workshop.
Yeah.
You try to add stuff to that, you don't, you won't make sense of it.
Yeah, I agree.
Like a workshop, just.
Yeah, just for definitely.
Uh, yeah, that would be excellent. We have a lot of things out there.
All right. So uh, that will go on the consent agenda.
Yes, sir.
All right, next up, discussion, presentation. Inspection of fees above ground pools.
So this this is very quick. For the fir-, I think for the first time ever, we had someone come to get a permit to do an above ground pool and you know, scrambling together with the staff, we're like, wait. So um, so the chief billing official says, hey, do we inspect above ground pools? And so we dug into the ICC code and, you know, whether we should be is the answer. So, and it's the first time we've ever had a request for a permit, uh, and we had no fees associated with it. So we're, we're coming to you just to get this on our books and and set fees, inspection fees for above ground pools. Um, ob- obviously, it it doesn't require a whole lot of time from our billing official to do those inspections. So, you know, we base those fees on that or predicated on that premise that we won't actually be there very long.
Fifty dollars.
We, so the proposal is as follows.
Okay.
Above ground swimming pools with no associated electrical components or associated decking, fifteen dollars. Above on-ground swimming pools with associated electrical components and no associated decking, thirty dollars. Above on-ground pools with electrical components and associated decking, seventy five dollars.
Let me ask you a question. How can you have a above ground pool without filtering and everything? You know, which has to have electricity.
So this, this.
This is a kiddie pool or what?
Like the time you put in your backyard. So people, um, believe it or not, that's that, that's in the ICC code, technically, we're supposed to be inspecting those now. Does anyone ever come to get a permit for them? No. But.
It goes further about the depth of it.
Twenty forty, yeah.
It's figured in the wall.
Yeah, it's not.
Well, but you, but, no, but you can buy them at Walmart. Yeah, yeah, you can buy them at Walmart, yeah. Um, so anyway, we 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 consider this as a basic consent item, just to, just to set fees associated for the, for the process. And we want to commend those people that approached us about the inspection.
Cause, cause then code enforcement now can go out to act.
Yeah.
Where you put that pool at.
Well, and we thought the timing was good. I mean, um, I I felt, I felt like um, our pool safety month kind of brought this to light and any anytime we can help make recommendations to folks on how these things are set up and how their access is going to add to the overall safety and welfare of communities to potentially avoid accidents.
I was just thinking that, like, I know my goal was, was finish the end of my backyard. Add, add some cool to their backyard, you know, to usually imply some type of barrier system that prevents, you know.
Access, yeah. But yeah, um, ICC code specifically mentions these types of structures, which, and I know we got a chuckle about someone coming for a permit because, you know. But it it happened, and so we wanted to take advantage of that and update our fees associated with the, in the process.
I don't, I don't think these are unreasonable. All right, James, just a moment. T-spots. Is there anything here that you're particularly interested in?
Um, I did want to do a part of session ten, that one, the cages discussion. I'll be back.
I'll be back. I'm sure you're getting out of here.
I'm not on cloud. I I'm here to sit.
I thought you were gonna say, you know, I thought you were gonna say it's value.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay, T-spots.
So um, really this, uh, I I just wanted to get an understanding from the board of, and that's why uh, our county engineer is here to join the conversation. Alan showed you what available T-spots balances were left, aside from the Jeff Davis Road project, which we've already submitted an LMEG application for and received the funding for. There's a T-spot match for that, about one point two million. Are we going to put another resurfacing program out like we, like the one we're just finishing now? Is that the desire of the board? And if so, how do we want to tackle that? You talked about, you know, capital in a work session and that being the only, um, when we put these programs together, they tend to dominate a lot of our time in a workshop.
Some homework done before we show up.
Right, yeah. So. If I may, I would say, Alan, if the board wanted to do another round of T-spots resurfacing, what would be your recommended target budget, assuming that we've got that one point two million encumbered for the Jeff Davis project? And you know, Commissioner Biggs and I have sort of talked offline about getting this started because I know he's got a couple of projects that are in mind already. So we want, we definitely want to add those to the discussion I have and and maybe talk to Commissioner Lincoln about one or two in the future. But we need to really put a recommendation forward to y'all. But we need to really put a recommendation forward to y'all to, to, to look at.
And where do we come up with the figures for Jeff Davis? Are those estimates?
That was, we provided the cost estimate, uh, just like we normally would for any project, so we feel very confident.
So once we go bid on it, because that road will need some, that road's going down.
Yes, sir.
It, it's deteriorating to the point where it's going to probably have to have some per se packaging, uh, that level.
Yes, and, and we, we encumbered that in our cost analysis when we decided that was the road to present. So we feel like we got coverage. Now, we can't predict the market when it goes out to bid, but, um, we got very good data in the county for the past few years and did it, in my opinion, the right prescription to solve the problem of the topic.
Yes, and what's on the table is, uh, to propose, uh, basically a workshop.
Yeah, we, we have five point six million I'm predicting we'll have at the end of this year. That's not counting, you know, of more applicants, you know, another application for L M next year. Yeah, there's.
And that, that you would probably incorporate into this project.
Yeah, and I, I would just be curious, you know, whenever we get there, an explanation of what we should kind of keep in reserve. So if we have one of these issues where we have washouts or whatever.
Yeah, that's correct, right.
To execute.
And we've talked about a percentage of preservation in general.
Yeah.
And we have really. We've talked about it.
But there's, there's still so many that, that we got to be paid, you know.
I tell you what, I drove to Salem last week. I was on a freshly paved Hudson County road. When I hit Crawford County line. I was like, now that should tax thirty dollars and it worked right there.
Okay, so can I get, can I get an expected timeline? So if, could this be maybe one, um, like a separate one-off that, that wouldn't be normally? My, my recommendation is don't put it on your regularly scheduled work session.
Right.
Yeah. And, and then timing, when do you want to try to accomplish it? Well, may I, what, how much time would you need with James and I to get this recommendation ready?
Yeah, so.
Cause I know James is.
Right, right.
James Milton's already working on it.
What we would do like last time, we would dust off the, uh, evaluation list, update the scores, try to do a quick little deterioration of what happened since the last time. Uh, James Milton and I will kind of prioritize things that we've noticed since the last project. Uh, we've got probably five or six that's already been identified, that we've been kind of keeping it on our side list. Uh, I know that we chose not to add a few this time, so we'd bring those back to your attention and then present like we did last time, the, the county map, what we've done. And then, uh, you know, to hit on Commissioner Watson and Commissioner Elton, I think we do have some of those roads that we paved back in, you know, sixteen or seventeen, eighteen that'd be looking for some preservation, uh, to kind of get them into good shape so we keep them that way. So, um, it will probably take us, depending on James' schedule, yeah, probably thirty days to get, get a good package together to do a good workshop.
So, and we, we still have the second Tuesday of the, of the month, and so maybe look at, we, we do more time here. So maybe look at if we don't have a, a large agenda like this, that we, we use one of our morning meetings to work through all the roads. And we use a Tuesday night, hour and a half, two hour to do.
Okay. So we'll be looking to hear from Jessica soon and try to schedule something a little further from Thursday away.
Okay.
To give us some time to do a presentation.
Chris, are you, um, folder of everything that you got? Have you got a list of everything we've done?
Yes, I have a map, a heat map that shows in different colors every road that we've paved since we've been. Yes, sir. Absolutely. I'm about to say, give me. We'll def, we'll definitely do that. And, and what I'll do, I'll update to catch up to the few that we added that were not on the original bid. So we do have a complete map of what the few that y'all were gracious to add on.
Next item is Floss meeting with the city of Tompkins.
Well, and I guess it's both, both of us.
Okay.
Um, we, we do have a joint meeting with the city coming up.
The joint project meeting. Right before our next, uh.
I think a board meeting. Uh, uh, we did send an official invitation. Well, I mean, I sent one to the city manager, but I don't think we've been able to get anything scheduled, so.
And, and so what we proposed for that meeting was just to lay out some courses of action, possible, uh, frameworks. Uh, as all y'all know, I think I've provided those frameworks to each of you. Uh, and I've had three town halls, so got very positive feedback on, on those. The city, uh, is, um, hasn't provided a framework. They just provided a percentage that they put out there, uh, without a real rationale for how to get to that percentage, but it was at forty percent. I think I've seen thirty-five to forty percent somewhere else. Uh, I did have a conversation with our state representative yesterday, uh, to make sure I understood the intent. And the intent is to not, uh, the intent is to use the Floss monies to provide property tax relief. Not to allow any government agency to add to their tax base, right? And so I think that's what their proposal is, uh, just now. Uh, but, um, I did have a conversation with our state representative. I did have that same conversation this morning with the ACCG. Uh, and again, Dante's guy, I suppose, is very clear that it is not to be allowed to be used to add to the coppers of any government authority. So, um, I do know that, uh, they spoke in the meeting about their utility rates and how they've used their utility rates to basically fund their operations. Uh, there was some talk about dropping their utility rates, uh, which would require them to actually have a tax increase. So, uh, you know, that would be one way to actually qualify at some point in the future to use some of those Floss dollars. They're surely not qualified to use them right now. But again, um, how do you get to the framework of, of the, uh, of the split, right? Because this is not a lost, it's not, there's not any categories that we have to go through. There's one category, how much tax relief can you provide the property owners in your county? That's, that's the whole gist of the law. And so that's what I developed these, uh, frameworks for. I, I don't believe they're ready to sit down and talk to us in, in public. I feel confident that I, I've put my frameworks out there. And, and I've been very cautious not to say this is the board position. So probably what I would ask is, would, would the board be okay if, if maybe Jason and I met offline? Now that we have our position out there, they have their position out there. See if we can, um, have some conversation. I think we need to have some conversations. Asking this board, how would you like to move forward?
Like, if not, we'll just talk publicly about it.
Uh, I guess that's not what we can do.
I don't understand why we wouldn't talk publicly about it. It's for the public and the folks paying anybody, but I, I, I support your current proposal.
I would, the other thing I would suggest is you'd have another board member with you. You'd have one back.
A non-form.
Right, right, right.
We have a non-form commission representative. Uh, and, and not, not in a position to make any, uh, promises, just where can we work to? And we'll come back a couple of days.
Where you going?
I think, I think that, I think the positions are state right now, so we need to, we need to try to communicate.
Would that, uh, Commissioner Watson's our vice chair?
He is.
Just to share a vice chair.
All right, uh, next item on the agenda is yours, is about the probate court, um, courtroom, and this has to do with the city as well. Wesley Habb.
Um, yeah, this is actually very simple. As you all know, we're not currently using the old probate courtroom. And the city had identified a desire to, to turn, kind of convert it into a training room. And if they, they want to renovate it and then, you know, set it up with computers and terminals and, um. Anyway, they, they want to like, and they're willing to take it into their allocated space and take it from ours. So, um, I told them I would mention it in our work session. I'm here, uh, and I'll, I'll let the other staff weigh in if they want to. I don't necessarily see an issue with it, but.
So it's a training room?
It's just a. Just a, it's not the offices, it's just the courtroom. They want to, they take the seating and the, and the bench out and everything, and I think just convert it into like a place where they can do training and things in it.
So just a courtroom, if not.
I mean, there's not a whole lot of savings in it for us because it's a tiny little portion of the whole building. I mean, there, I mean, there are some miniscule savings in it for us, I guess, but it's not anything notable.
Yeah, I don't know all the details, but I understand was they want like a training room and then that would be used for, for that governmental training or any type of programs that we bring into, uh, the city that has to do with workforce training. Where we might have, you know, members of the community, uh, go and do some training to help, you know, better prepare that.
Yeah, they had mentioned that their HR department wanted to use it and that their, um, police department wanted to have it as a training. So that, that's what the assistant city manager expressed to me, but. And obviously, whatever the renovation cost, they would, they would incur that.
If we didn't have any proposed use for.
No, no.
Not redus.
Not that I'm aware of. Um, but I, I figured that would probably be cleaner if it, in our agenda, for, just to spread it across the minutes that that exchange of space happened. Because we do have a formula how we split costs in that new agreement. That way you could, if the board decided to do that, they could, you know, we could go back and see where that space officially changed hands to the city from the county.
So, and, and I mean, you've already had this conversation.
We have.
We want to have a conversation with, with, with the rest of the board, Mr. Jackson.
I don't have a problem with, you know, we, we, we continue to search and find ways to consolidate, bring people in, bring offices in, and, and, and it just fall. I mean, we're trying to get rid of a little stack, but we're not, we're trying, we're not trying to get rid of room that we currently have and, and on the property we're never going to get rid of. So is that the best? Is it in our best interest at this point just to paint it over and then find ourselves in a situation where we may have some more consolidated efforts that we're running out? And you did share something with me yesterday that was on board. We do have some storage space now, but we got a lot of files and plans that we have to keep up with that, uh, Andrew, Andrew's Drive is cleared out. And I think we're going to be able to get rid of most of that, but, uh, you know, I, we just don't know where we're going to be in a few months. So all I'll say is just think about that a little bit, yeah.
I agree, um, until we can get the everything moved from Andrews, as far as the storage and everything, to, to hold off on doing it. Because we have the old, um, probate storage room, but I'm not sure if it's going to be enough room.
Know that's old building, so don't overload the floor, the floor above your space, you know? That's the better, I'll call concrete something.
So I, that, that's all I'm saying. I, I, I'm saying if, at this point, you know, if it was going to be, if it's going to move the needle, needle huge for us to save, save the taxpayers money. Well, I'd say how you was, what's still, but.
So what I'm hearing is that we're open to, uh, doing it, but we need to take some time.
Right.
Uh, to be sure that we're, we're level set with our footprint. And I know we had other footprint. Okay.
Would it be appropriate, just to get, you know, Jessica has been heading up the Andrews Drive portion of the transition. You want to give them a thirty-second update as to how far we've got?
Yeah.
So everybody that is in the building has been notified. Most, most of them have been given a six month, um, to be out. Jason has been in communication with, um, the counseling center, and I think they've been communicating with the state to see if our state doesn't really have anything to do with us. We hope to have, um, public defender moved by this Friday. And, um, hopefully we'll be able to get most of the stores, our storage stuff out by this Friday.
That's just electric with me.
No, 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 no. Our stuff. The election stuff, the state has to come down and inspect the new place that we want to store the stuff. And so we're looking at doing, using the magistrate office, I'm not magistrate office, I'm sorry, the magistrate courtroom as well as the old, um, what is it, environmental health office to kind of expand the election office.
Yep.
Pam has been in contact with the state, we ain't going to have them to come down and inspect that area, the courtroom, so that we can know if they're going to allow us to store the equipment.
Yeah, it's perfect, yeah. And, and, and varying minor renovations, all of which can, we can do with some third-party local help and manage all of ourselves, so very low cost, so.
Yeah, not D O C related, but the, um, old DA's office we're working on updating yet so that the tax commission, tax assistance office can get geared over there.
Which they're excited to do.
What's a whole lot to do, the paint, we ain't done it.
It's painted, but it's.
What about promised places? Did we ever get enough attention from them? Cause we were trying to, okay, they're just, somebody's been there.
Uh, while we're on the sub, while we're on the subject, um, so this, I've reached out to the State Properties Commission and for that particular, um, facility, they, they hunted me back to G dot. Apparently this is still a G dot thing. So I've been in contact with the G dot person, um, who was surprised to realize there was a reversionary clause. But had they have acknowledged the fact that we are going to turn the building over to them, it sounds like they're going to turn around and liquidate. So, uh, yeah.
Oh, we, we raised out, right, officially?
No, no, but we, we need to.
Talk about that, it feels to me that.
It is, yeah. Yeah. We had one about that. Yeah. Yeah, a, a conversation has been had, but no, we haven't done anything officially about that yet. But so, anyway, so the, the, um, they've acknowledged that they're soon to be in proceeded.
Yeah, I think, what, September the thirtieth?
That was the date to have everybody out. And, um, lastly, I'll add on this, on the, the space efficiency effort. We have a, a few USDA employees in the Drake Building that apparently have been, I mean, I think they've been in, I think they've been in that. I mean, I think they've been in, I think they've been in that office for nearly twenty years with no lease. And, uh, so anyway, I've reached out to you, I've got a firm contact with the USDA. I've given them a firm date of vacay too, they're, I said, I might even have some space for you in the Lee Building downstairs if you're interested, but that would require a lease and monetary compensation. You know, and, and I guess in the current state of affairs in the federal government, they're saying that that's just not a possibility. So, um, we, that, what used to be the Soil and Water District Office, that's the one that they're in, so, um.
There's no, we go. I think they used the one in, uh,
So, I think they do have an office in Barzil, they've closed the Griffin office now.
Yeah.
But, I mean, there's all kinds of issues with a, with a federal agency using our facility with no lease, so I have a real issue with that, so. We, we are being kind neighbors and giving them the same amount of time that they gave everybody else, so. But just understand, I think I copied y'all on that effort. I sort of discovered that late, I mean, I, I honestly, I didn't realize we had that situation, but. And that's been rectified as well.
Okay, um, moving on, we can move to county attorney. Do you want to go ahead and, we moved one item up, just to make sure you covered it before you have to take off?
Yeah. Yeah, I've got my quarter.
That's the second concession session, standing in that cage. So.
Want to talk about that before you, I think, or?
Yeah, these are, and I just threw these on here, those to keep us on track, these are hidded and quitted updates. What, what I intend to do, uh, because I had a meeting with Schneider, that they had their, they presented their results to me, it actually resulted in a fairly short meeting because we were way out of bounds on budget. So, what I'm proposing to do is to go back out with a design bill, RFP, that would include, and this is where I want to get guidance from the board. It would include the Civic Center concession stand, the batting cages, and the scorers platforms, all into one project. Commissioner Watson and I had discussed upgrading the rest of the fencing. Uh, I don't know if that's something that we want to include in this, or do we want to include this at all?
My suggestion is if you're getting a bid for a larger project, have it as an at all, so we can see. I mean, if you see we're in, within budget and we can, you know, tackle it, I say we can kind of tackle it.
Do it all, face it.
Yeah, the, the other fields, so the Build Two got completely renovated, new fencing, the other fields had some minor work, but then didn't have any, nothing really visual. I think it'll go a long way, I don't think it's huge expense, but some of that, you know, at least look at. But in regards to the, the concession stands, everything, I've, I've been in conversation with a, a local contractor who has been looking at this. I think this is the best approach, because he, along with some of his subcontractors, have looked at this. They said they can value in here this town a good bit, because it's pretty, it was open design, for what it is.
And, and that's essentially what Schneider said too, it's like, what, what ended up in the design was something, you know.
It'd be nice.
Yeah, very nice, but it's not necessar-. Exactly necessary, yeah. So, my thought was just take this approach, we'll, we'll bring the results back to the board and then make a decision on whether we move forward or not. But that would, we would include the fencing. Uh, lastly, this, obviously this, um, because we, on the last project, we utilized all of our Level Two SLOs funds, correct? This would require a, a ci- city collaboration as well, so, uh, this is something I would have to work closely with the city manager on. Why are?
You, you asked a question, and I, nope, it's no problem.
Okay. Oh, and I cut it off.
That was the point, so big.
Okay, meter receive?
Yeah, that's the best approach.
Then that's, that's the way we will go. And we, we'll leave the specs in this fairly vague, so we'll get probably some varying degrees of ideas, and then that's the, that is the idea, to have people come pitch us a project, rather than pre-design.
The only challenge is this is pretty hard.
Yeah, we all know what you, what you asked for.
It will, it will be.
I mean, you know, we spent a lot of money on, on break, they should do it, guys. So.
I, I think, uh, that whole area is, you know, it's good for a community, it's good for quality of life, it's good for, um, companies looking to come into our community, and, uh, you know, I think we saw with the rec department this year, the, the numbers that we're getting, you know, so it's being well-received, and it's good for the community.
When, being a part of these tournaments, I know Lamar County did a, a rec-style tournament. That, that's huge, and the amount of people that come, you know, to these tournaments and spend money, and, you know, they don't have to, we don't stay in hotels, because we're only an hour away, but, you know, you get gas, you get drinks, food, and, you know. I know we don't, yeah, and I don't know if we have the fields to be able to do something at that capacity, I think we need more, we would need more, but I think we could have a small, style rec tournament.
Right, throw them a throw, throw something straight at you. Yes. How much land we got over there about?
Yeah, probably. It's actually, what about the whole course?
You know, I don't know how much land we got over there.
It's a joint, yeah, we all have a seat.
Yeah, right. That's, that may be on down the road, but at least get it in your mind, you know, something different.
And what it would take, I think Morton County had a project similar to that, it was, it was super nice, but I think it would open up a lot of opportunity.
They've just cut the revenue.
We had something, Mr. Chairman? Uh, I would recommend we put this on the agenda for the joint meeting this month, and see about that. And when we talk about budget, I don't know what the budget is, but we need to have a dollar about, because this wasn't contemplated when we did twenty twenty-two SLOs, what I'm saying is, if we don't get their buy-in, does that mean it's it's a go? We need to talk with them about this.
Yeah.
Because they, they've not committed to help us with what we've already done, and we've covered that, most of that under, the Level Two stuff. But all of that, you know, Level Two stuff that we had in twenty sixteen, that's not part, we didn't contemplate that in twenty twenty-six. They were rewriting, I'm not gonna say they're gonna pay us to help us.
In, in fairness, and Alan brings a great point, but in fairness, we've, for the press here, we've not approached them about it either, so this, you know. That, so I, I agree, that would be a great opportunity to pitch it.
Because they're spending their SLOs that they did on other things, so we gotta really sell it to get their buy-in, and I would hopefully should be able to. And a dollar figure, if y'all got, I mean, that's the, the.
Only thing I remember is what Schneider proposed, early on, to phase one, phase two calls, I think it was phase one, three million, phase two, one, something like that. I think you can get it done under that.
Under a million, yeah, that'd be great, yeah.
Good?
Yep.
All right. We'll move back to items with the county attorney, uh, discussion regarding the Upton County alcohol ordinance.
Yeah, um, so recently, some questions came up about our alcohol, um, ordinance, and, um, specifically about the measuring part of it, in one of our, our meetings, and the chairman asked me to take a look at that, to make sure that our ordinance was, you know, that, that it was legal, legitimate, and, um, so I've been doing that, I've consulted with ACCG, and, uh, because these, these alcohol ordinances are kind of, they're, they, they can be convoluted, and, and especially, uh, if you don't have specifics in your ordinance on how to do certain things, like the measurements. So, in consulting with them, um, in the meantime, we actually received a, um, I guess you would say, a complaint from someone to the Department of Revenue about specifically, uh, the last approval that we did, that was, I don't know if I'll call it file, I'm not sure what the name of the business is now, but, that's located.
Sunny Side.
Sunny Side. Located directly across from a church, uh, which was a, a concern of at least one citizen. But, so we got the complaint, um, and the young lady, uh, with the Department of Revenue, she and I have had multiple conversations about our practices, what we did, and how it was measured, and, um, our ordinance, so at some point in time, she actually went out physically herself and measured it, and, uh, reported back to me yesterday, or the day before, that, um, everything looked good, I mean, what we did as far as in our, um, our meeting approving the, the license was, was fine, the measurements fine, um, and I know one of, some of the documentation that was presented to the board at that previous meeting, where the concerns were, um, and I, I've got here, there, I'm not really sure, and y'all saw this, where they were doing the measurement or whatever, and the distance was not, was, was, um, less than, uh, what we contend was. I'm not sure how that was measured, so I can't really speak to that, all I can tell you is the Department of Revenue, Revenue actually went out and measured behind us, and they said, it's fine, they can sell, uh, this, uh, malt beverage and wine out of that store, now distilled spirits, they could not, but that was not before, it's not a concern. But that being said, um, what I wanted to let y'all know, our, our ordinance actually is, is more strict than state law, which is allowed, but I think that's something that, that citizens need to know, that on, on the books right now, our, our ordinance actually is more strict than state law, um, specifically, um, and I was a part of this when it went, went down, but, uh, not, you know, deep into it when we actu- actually put this ordinance in place, and I know a lot of the board members here weren't, weren't on the board, but, um, specifically, it, really the only difference in what our ordinance is and what state law says is, is the measuring aspect, and that, um, we, we have in our ordinance that distance shall be measured by most direct route of travel on the ground, okay? That's where state law talks. That's all it is. Um, as far as the measuring aspect. Distance shall be measured by most direct route of travel on the ground, okay? So, when I said earlier that it can get convoluted, because as you can see, what does that mean, you know? Well, we went further when we did our ordinance, and I'm assuming that was the concern, we put this additional language in front door of the licensed premises to the property line of the prescribed area. So, we added that, and that's what makes ours, um, you know, obviously, if you listen to that wording, it's, it's a, a more strict situation.
You know, is there the front door of the church, or is it?
They're suit.
Who are you talking about?
The states. The state, yeah, the state is, um, front door to front door, right? By most direct route of travel on the ground.
Right.
Okay, so the question is, what does that really mean? And that's, that's where it gets, um, you know, it can get complicated, I guess is what to put it, but without getting into the weeds on that, um, the main thing I wanted to report back is that our ordinance is fine, our ordinance is more strict, actually. Uh, our measuring in that particular case was not in violation of state law. And I'm assuming the, the lady, her name is Amy Doherty, Assistant Special Agent in Charge, Alcohol and Tobacco, Georgia Department of Revenue. Very, very nice, uh, lady, and, uh, matter of fact, I told her, I said, we have this come up occasionally, so I'm gonna keep you as a reference. And she said that was fine. So, you know, there is an opportunity here, I think, for us, if we wanted to, to, I wouldn't say clean it up, that's really not a good way to put it, but make it more specific as far as our measuring, if we want to in the future. That way there's no question, no ambiguity, we could, we could do something such as, uh, you know, leave the language as it is, but to be measured from front door of the premises in a straight line, um, to the, to the front door of the, the licensee. Or we could do something even more drastic and say, um, from property line to property line. And that, you know, closest property line point to closest property line point, and we could actually, Jason said this before, and I know it was a great idea, we could, we could put the onus on, on the person, the applicant, and say, you got to provide in your application a, a license, Georgia license surveyor's affidavit indicating that they have taken that measurement, and it is, you know, it, it, it is appropriate.
If you did property line to property line, that'd be really straight.
Well, I know, I, I'm just saying, that's, yeah.
So, what we see a lot in other municipalities, that the, the county will provide those surveys as part of the application fee, because as, as you're hitting on a lot, what we're seeing, you know, number one, a citizen is not able to determine property lines, meet some bounds, and know where that property ends, and the means and method of measuring. I get out my corporate will that I just bought at Home Depot, or I do it the procedures set forth by the state standards of the licensed professional plan surveyor in the state, those are two different measures, and when you're talking about two or three feet, it gets really emotional when you tell that person that you didn't measure right, and, so that may be something that, that the county, we won't consider that having that survey as part of the application, because probably fifty percent of the people that we work with that's part of, or like you said, bring me a survey, stamp, sign, seal that this is within X amount of feet. And it takes all, all, all of the doubt out of our staff trying to determine those type of measures, you know? I just talked with Nash, our local surveyor, and he said, he's been told to do it three different ways, and give them three different answers, so there is deal, in the public's mind and how they're directing us to do it for them, there's ambiguity.
Yeah, and, and, and quite frankly, I think there's ambiguity at state level, because as I said, you know, we, we, we have our ordinance, and it goes even further as far as how to measure, but the state says, says most direct route of travel on the ground, okay? What's that mean, about walking, car, golf cart, you know?
So, um, the individual that came and did public comment and provided this, uh, I believe he alluded to language that said that you go through the obstacles.
State don't say that. Because you can't, you can't walk through a tree, you can't walk through a rock.
Well, that's where it gets really great, because then you say, and I, I didn't know if y'all want to go into all this now, but.
I, I just want, people are asking, so I, I need something in writing to say, this is why it is. I'm not gonna remember everything we just said here. And I don't want, I'm not a lawyer, I have to, all day, get depressed, but I would rather.
I don't think you're gonna be able to get a, 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 when I would call it, is a cheat sheet on it, because every situation is gonna be different, because obstacles, what is that, okay? And I had this conversation with a lady at the Department of Revenue, because, okay, we've had instances where folks have put up fences, okay? What kind of fence? Two posts, three posts, four posts? How tall? Does it have to be chain link? Can you, where are you ready to get over it, or, you know, you know, so, so there's gonna be a gray area that a decision is just gonna have to be made. And then the, you know, you can take it a step further and say, okay, well, one, that's really not a statement earlier. Then you can take it a, a step further and say, okay, well, there was no fence when they bought it, and now they've applied, and hey, a light bulb has gone off, and they figured out, hey, I might have a problem, so then they erect the fence. Okay, so I asked the Department of Revenue that, you know, if, if you have to go around that fence, then they would meet the criteria, okay? But it appears they put it up just to, to meet the criteria, okay? Well, then that's the question mark. They come to you and say, "No, I didn't do it that way, I, I did it by static value, you know, I, I did that because I wanted to, to beautify my property," or, or for whatever reason. So, when I asked her that, her response was, "Well, when it gets to that point, we just send it up to the state and let them decide."
Which, to me, what she's saying is, that's why the Board of Commissioners makes the big bucks.
Right.
To make the decision, so.
And, and to go back to this, I, I, I think this particular, well, I mean, the measurement came off the public, I mean, you know, so that's not a surveyor's measurement, and, um, that is not what the Department of Revenue says is accurate.
No, it, it was measured on, you know, on-
We actually had a commissioner measure it, right?
Yeah.
Just, just to make sure.
So, it, it, it is, it really, it, it's a, it can get kind of, uh, convoluted when you get to the barriers and that sort of thing, so I, I, I think the only way you're gonna be able to come back something like that and get what you're wanting to say, "Hey, this is what we do," is to go to some kind of bright line rule, "Hey, we're shooting a laser from point A to point B, that's it." Through obstacles, it don't matter what's there, we're shooting a laser to it, and that's the measurement.
I, I don't know what, how, what feels, what, if they think we should do anything, or, or, or is this something that we can tackle right now? But, um, it seems to have come up just a couple times in the four months that I've, I've been here, and, um, beer and wine licenses just keeps coming up.
Well, you know, and this ain't for this, this, this needs to go in another court session. I got an idea on it anyway, is, is limiting the amount of, of beer and wine sales, or get somehow.
Or per capita.
Yeah, per capita.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm with, I think the city did something similar, um, so, and, you know, I just, I just think, like, how many, how many applications do we get for beer and wine licenses in this small town, um, small community that we have? And typically, there's other things going along with the beer and wine license, those establishments, so.
I, I will say though, you know, it does seem like it's come up a lot recently, and we do get applications, but the, uh, I was talking to Doug earlier about the frequency or whatever, and he brought out the fact, this actually, our ordinance, we, we redid that, um, nine years ago. So, we really, if, if you look at it, that, that's what he, I didn't realize it was that long ago, but he said nine years ago, we really haven't had really that many issues over that time.
Well, what I will say is that, uh, having been here seven years, we have less, we have, maybe have the same amount of applications, but we actually have less places that are licensed to sell now than we did, so. And I tend to, uh, and just as a person who's responsible for daily operations of the county, I agree with the theory, we have too many, so, I, I really would love to pursue something like Commissioner Ellington said, like limited by, you know, uh, I, I was saying per capita, you said-
I don't say per square mile.
Per square mile, yeah. Because then they become a cherished commodity if they're limited, and then generally they're gonna be nicer establishments if there's only certain amount of-
One thing I didn't add, and just so you know, in, in the state law, there is a provision that if, if it's a, uh, grocery store licensed for, for the retail sale of wine and malt beverage for consumption off premises, um, you, it really is no, um, it, there's no distance requirement if by local ordinance, okay?
So, grocery stores exempt from that?
Right, it, but we would have to put it in place in our local ordinance, so just-
You gotta define grocery store.
Well, it does hit.
It gives a size for the grocery store, and I'm not sure if it-
Per capita, yeah, per, yeah, it goes into detail on that, actually. They had good, I'll be honest.
I kinda like, may I ask one more question?
I, I think we could talk about it, I don't wanna tip some all day on it, but I, I think we're hearing from the community some concerns about beer and wine licenses, uh, where they're at and how many there are, and so, I don't know what action we should pursue right now.
So, let, let's use the most recent approved application as the example, the one that you have right there. Say if the ordinance changed, and we went from property line to property line, requires a survey, just to even submit your application, so when that, and let's say that under the current ordinance, that meets or exceeds, but under the future ordinance, it doesn't. So, at what time would, so they could keep renewing, but if it changed hands, then that, that, that's now, someone that's put a million dollars into, or, I don't know, I'm guessing how much they put, they put a ton of money into that property, and it's actually very, very nice, you know, they wouldn't be able to sell it, because it may, it might have less value, because they would have to meet now the more stringent ordinance.
Well, I, I think it's how you write an ordinance, if you write an ordinance to any property that is licensed at the time of the issuance of the ordinance-
His grandfather.
His grandfather, yeah. It doesn't matter, I sell the property, and the property's worth something because it has that.
Yeah, I think that ain't been due applicant to that, you know?
So many of them per area.
Right.
They would go away and do-
I think that's-
You would have to create all these hoops, and jump rope, do this, open nose, raise your hand. You have so many, that's all you got.
I don't know the answer.
Maybe X amount in each district.
It's, it's really just a crazy law and, and ordinance, because, you know, I, I was hypothetically, you know, throwing out all these examples to her, and, and, you know, especially with a situation where if they don't meet it, and they built something, and then they did meet it, okay, well, what if you have identical properties, and I know this is ridiculous, but I mean, I'm just looking at it from a constitutional standpoint, you know, why aren't you treated better than me kind of deal? If you have an identical property facing each other, and this guy's got a fence, and he's selling, this guy doesn't have a fence, and he wants to, and he builds a fence, well, you built it only to get around it, so we're not giving you. I mean, how's that, how's that fair under the constitutionally? This, this guy gets to sell, and the only difference is, he's got this little obstacle.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's just bizarre.
It needs to be certified and, and adapted, you know, black and white, I think the ambiguity that you just caused.
The developer, purchaser, the owner, then they have to come up to county and go, "Hey, am I gonna meet?" They need to be able to look at it and make that judgment before they approach it, and before their project come turn in their license, and they done, they done, they see, have to go around, make sure they, they done this, and, I mean, we really don't want to put the burden of, of, of having to go get a survey and, and all that kind of stuff, to find out, maybe they, maybe they don't, you know, if it's questioned. So-
We can have the workshop, they can do that sometime.
Right. So, I'm hearing that we need to work it, right? We agree we need to do something, right? Is it okay the way it is until we do something, or do we need to, uh, alert the public that we're not gonna do beer and wine licenses until we execute this?
So, you say a moratorium?
Moratorium.
Yeah, if you're, if, if, we're hearing where they're going is an issue, and how many there are is an issue. I'm asking your opinion.
Just an FYI, we have two.
Yeah, we just say it's-
Allow it.
They're submitted?
That's what, yeah.
Yeah, so you, you did a moratorium, submitted after, you submitted after his date, but a moratorium for her. Yeah, that'd be-
But I think, I think we need to, like, do, do something like that on moratorium, until we can figure it out.
We just gotta, we gotta give, create a timeline that we're gonna get this done, right? Because it's just, it's just beer and wine licenses, it's not like-
Right.
It's not, it's not beer and wine AR, beer wine residential, right? It's just beer and wine.
And, and, uh, the positive part is, there's a million examples, for example, because average communities don't know some of them. You're good in the bad.
I don't think it's gonna be that hard, I think it's gonna be drawn out, but I think we, we owe the public an answer to say, "Hey, we're gonna, we're gonna pause," um, and I think, uh, I think the way, in my training, which I haven't had a lot, uh, you know, they said we should do it, not necessarily best, but any moratorium, it's like, at the next meeting, we, we say, "Hey, we're gonna put in a moratorium, uh, for thirty days, and then at the next meeting, we're gonna extend that moratorium to the one hundred and eighty day mark, but we had some public hearings, uh, so, you know, we're not just doing it without, uh-
They were in the pipeline, so, while they come and send. This may or may not-
So, they wouldn't apply to them?
They wouldn't apply to-
Well, I understand that, but we could, we could maybe do something.
I, this makes, I think we need to make it clear-
The June Boise Water.
I just think we need to make it clear though, just for the general public, we're not doing this because our ordinance is illegal, I mean, our ordinance is fine, we just want to reshape it, I guess.
We wanna make it clear, clear.
Yeah.
We wanna make it so more investing money-
More, pramerely for the citizens to understand.
Would we have to do that moratorium out of ordinance?
They would.
Yeah.
And would we, we'd want that on the May meeting agenda?
So, I'm asking-
Is that too quick of a turnaround?
Yeah, I would.
Do you do a thirty day to give the public notice to a hearing, because you gotta have a hearing, right?
I mean, we can, I mean, we can, if you wanna put it on for, for the, uh, next agenda that we, that it's our intent to present a moratorium at the next agenda.
When you're prepared to receive thirty beer and wine licenses?
No, I think, uh, of course.
I mean, that's the whole point of the moratorium, is to rent-
They're not, they're not coming this one, they're coming next.
I heard you said it won't impact-
Yeah, either way, uh-
It won't impact.
We, we, we do moratorium except for the two we have, oh-
Correct.
That's what I'm saying, once you put the moratorium-
Whoever applies until then.
And, but, what I'm saying is, if you say we're gonna wait till June to do the moratorium, how many applications is she gonna get between now and the fourth week of June?
That's right, that's right.
And that whole point of the moratorium is to not have a mad rush.
That's right.
So, I would say in this meeting, we at least put in a temporary moratorium for thirty days, and then we do the formal ordinance or whatever in June. So, they got two weeks to fly.
Moratorium language is fairly set.
I think that's a discussion copy, I'll be able to get a couple letters.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I, I think we would have to, because we're only gonna go to a public hearing, yeah.
Well, I think-
Yeah, for, because it's an ordinance, it's on.
Well, the way I understand it is that we can do a moratorium without a, a, a hearing, but you shouldn't do it like a hundred and eighty days, you shouldn't do it thirty days, so you get it placed, and then you, the next meeting, you have public hearing, and you extend it out to a hundred and eighty days after you've heard concerns.
We did have a public hearing, no, no.
The subdivision, yeah, we did. And not, and you can do it both times if you want, I mean, you can, if the intent is to have, you know, you can do your thirty day and have a public hearing, and then either otherwise, well, you, you can have more, kinda be, I'm almost interested to hear what you have to say.
I'm always interested in what people have to say. All right, we got that down as a to-do.
So, do we wanna have a public hearing in May? Or are we just gonna-
I would say yes. I mean, it's better, I mean-
For the thirty day moratorium, yeah. You got time for advertising.
Well, we got time to advertise, I said we do a moratorium in May and figure out a hundred and eighty days, so we don't have to-
Yeah, that's, that's do that, yeah. And you can add-
I, I just, I just didn't wanna give people opportunity to speak. Okay, all right. I think you're next.
Well?
The next subject is, uh, may you change it and set it to a moratorium?
I'll put that out there at your request.
I think, look guys, I'm pushing you, okay? I'm, I'm a pushy guy, I like to, you know? You know, uh, we, we started working on this prior to, to new moves here, uh, you know, uh, and, and we got a lot of feedback on that, I, I, and, and you actually participated in, in, in some of that feedback, but I, I, I'm still focused, I think it's, uh, you know, I, I, I'll order it important, but I, I think zoning is more important, zoning takes us out a hundred years from where we're at today. Uh, I think that we need to look at, I, I shared some information with one of you guys, uh, about AR, because we need to determine that, because if we don't determine what AR is, developers are gonna determine for us. Um, so, that being said, I should, that was, that was, those were talking points, I'm not, that's not my stance, that, those, that will start.
Yeah.
Uh, basically, uh, to, to sum that up, you know, there's a lot of things that, it, it does encourage growth by doing stuff like that, you, you attract people with a, with a plan, when, uh, when you have defined lot sizes and growth, it helps you plan for, you know, future, uh, development of extending utilities, power, water, you know, it helps you develop your community down the road. Uh, and I, I, you don't have a copy of, I, I emailed you a copy, I didn't, I didn't bring one today, but, uh, you know, just, just I threw it out there, five acres or more, say, or anything less than that, doesn't mean you can't live in county, doesn't mean you can't, uh, build your house, that, that mean, that mean you gotta come rezone. Uh, we have an opportunity to go ahead and restate moving forward, and, and, and I wanna make this real clear, because we didn't do a very good job this last time, this does not pertain to anything existing today, it would be not the word to use, but grandfather is non-conforming, is what the actual definition term for it is, but moving forward from today, or whatever day we adopt something, anything forward will apply to this. So, typically, the majority of people, that's gonna impact, it's people moving in, it, it's, you know, you know, obviously, we got kids and stuff like that, it's gonna be, yeah, it would impact, it would have an impact, but it will be people doing something different from that day forward. Uh, we need to talk about this, what we need to get to now, I know we got the flag lot thing going on, uh, but I also think some of that flag lot stuff can be covered, taken care of if we took care of this, and, but I, I do wanna say this, and I, and I know it, it's a big concern of the chairman's, it's like, we had this big old thing, and we had all this face, absolutely one hundred percent true, I agree a hundred percent with you, but what you don't understand is, is that when you move the ball over here, you affect all that's over here, it change, there's so many things that cross over, this guy has to change, so, once you do one thing, you gotta go over here and do all it, and they were trying to present that out at one time.
Right, right.
Which made it really confusing, so, so I'm going to take a section, take a section, take a section, that we can all, and look, we're gonna have to get some public, we don't have public hearings, I will tell you, in my district, people have talked to, people have talked to, I didn't come up with this five acres, some of my constituents came up with a five acres, and, and they came up, the last time I was at, when I had, when I was getting pounded out in the, in the hall, while I, I was- when I had, when I was getting pounded out in the, in the hall, while I, I was, I was sitting behind the podium. But, yeah, I, I mean, I was getting beat up out there, y'all went, I couldn't even tag out, but, uh, you know, th- th- that's what they were telling, they are, but they were also concerned was, hey, well, you know, I, I, I got three acres, and you telling you want twelve now, does that mean you gonna come get my pony, and I'm like, oh, no, no. So, it, it's all about communication, uh, and explaining to people, and, and it's a lot easier to explain to people than let the Facebook warriors explain to people. It really is. Um, so, I'm challenging you, I'm challenging you today, I'm challenging you on YouTube, I'm challenging, let's, 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 let's move on this, let's, let's do something on this, let's get some plans going. I know we got the planning commission's gonna be working on some of that stuff, but, but guys, you know, I'm gonna tell you exactly what happens, when you task the planning commission to do something, and you already got something in your mind you want, and it's different from what they want, and they put all this time and effort to it, and they come and lay it in front of you, you go throw it away, say your own thing. That, that, that's, that's not good, we, we gotta communicate, you know, and they didn't know what, what, what we want. We're at, we're tasking to do something, we're not giving them any guidelines, and then when they come back, we'll say no, that's, 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 that's the, that don't work. That's just asking.
But that isn't serious, guys, so.
So, I would say I agree with you, James.
I was at the planning commission Monday evening, um, I don't know why the YouTube light, my wife.
How did it light? We all look right there.
Look like Perry Mason.
I think they had on a pink shirt, big kid.
So, um. And they asked for us to come, and I, I, I don't think we need, you know, five county commissioners and an entire planning commission, I think a couple of us could go sit down with the planning commission and throw out some ideas, and we had a discussion about, we need an overarching concept, right, because, you're right, you, when you do, when you do something to A R, it's really gonna affect, okay, if I'm not gonna be A R anymore, where am I gonna be, I'm gonna be R one, I'm gonna be this, uh.
State presidential.
Yeah, rule of state, um, so, we need to have a concept where we wanna go, we can work on, on individually, as long as we understand the concept, and, and I, I know I've asked for it a couple of times, is, you know, and it's all about messaging. I mean, if you had a one pager that showed, this is what you do in A R, this is what R one is, this is what R two is, this is what R four is, right? You can understand, and I'm, I'm really a, uh, O B one kinda guy, I like to overview, like, if you can't explain it to me on one slide, it's too complicated, right? I, I had to brief general officers, I only got one slide, right, can't take a hundred and fifty-five pages in there. You gotta be able to explain where you're trying to go, and everybody understands it, right? And then you can get into the details of those individual things, so, uh, I'm with James, I think five acres is perfectly fine for A R. Again, just as he said, if you're already in A R, you're in A R, right? Uh, where I might diverge from James just a little bit, is my concern about what might be changed, right? And what is rezoning, I mean, so, you have your districts, your land districts, your A R, R one, or two, right? But then we have this, uh, rezoning, right, when someone comes to rezon, I mean, I come to you and say, hey, I wanna do X, this land is permanent for Y, alright? We have to look at it as a rezoning, right, so, uh, and we saw this with the last subdivision, right, they wanted to do something, and we, they requested rezoned, but all the parameters that were put upon them in the rezon were pretty much the same parameters of the zone that we're in, so, um, I just think we have to understand that, um, and be open to rezoning when it's requested, right, we can't be like, it's gonna be this way forever, uh, because things change. And I think we do that when we do the concept, like, we have to understand, rural estate, I think, is a good idea. But there's no agriculture or livestock in the ordinance for rural estate. And I think, if you tell someone, hey, you can, you can subdivide your A R land, but it's gonna become rural estate for your children or grandchildren or whatever, can they still have the pony, can they still have the goats, right? It's not in there, right, so I think, those are the lifestyle things that I heard out of Thurston, when I had the town hall, that they were interested in more so than whether it was three acres or five acres. So, I know I'm saying a lot, I just, I'm a less say fair kinda guy, I would rather the government not tell me anything that I can't do, if it's my land, uh, but my, my only concern, I'm, I'm with you on five acres, my only concern is with you, if we have someone coming back to appeal something, or whatever, we have, like, if you wanna do a moratorium, right, right now, right? How would that affect us? Put us in a legal binding. All right, what, what, well, no, uh, there's, there's totally different, I, I'm talking about on subdivision, I'm not, we, we don't, you just said, you just said, they're, they're, they're doing a rezoning.
Yeah.
We, we.
As long as we're good, I'm good.
That, that rezoning, or rezoning in a subdivision, it's two different things.
That's all I'm asking, is that we don't, we don't complicate it.
Right, and, and it's two different things, so, you know, subdivision could be a actual subdivision or subdividing.
Yeah.
Uh, but yeah, and, and, and that was a rezoning, and, um, at that point, they, they have that right to appeal, but on, once, once the appeal process goes out, they can't go back before, for, for that rezoning on that property for a month, that's, that's our current ordinance, right?
Yes.
Uh, so, that being said, it, but, but this, 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 this really doesn't pertain to that, I'm, I'm not, I, I was advocating for this project to become.
I'm, I'm with you with five acres, I've been, I've been kinda there, I just wanna make sure, I do not wanna spend, you're a great guy, but I do not wanna spend one penny of taxpayer dollars paying for a lawyer, that, and we don't need to, that's all I'm at, so.
We're kinda all repaying for that.
But, I say, all I ask you is, go back and, and read the ordinance that I drafted up, me and Chuck G D P, that's, man, that's, yeah, try it. So that stuff is, man, that's better sliced bread, okay? But, uh, just tell it kinda what you wanna do, and it came up with all of that, okay? But if, if you'll see in there, hey, I, if, if, there's, 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 there's a spot in there for variances, if you have a, a five acre tract, and you want to do something, or you wanna split a tract into something less, there, there's variances, there, there's a variance process. It covers the thing about tracks being grandfathered, I tried to make sure that those proportions in there that, that, that were addressed, so it took some of the fears away, like, hey, we're not gonna do any, and, and you have a path to change something without rezoning it, you, you're able to go before the planning commission and get a variance on something, uh, to, uh, and not have to come for us, and not have to go have to rezon, and do all these other different things.
I'm with you.
That's it, that's all I got on that, and, and I will, and, and I'm asking that we, we look at a moratorium on that. Uh, you know, and, 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 and not, cause we got something big coming, because I'm trying to get you guys to move.
We, we do have, uh, and I'm meeting tomorrow with a group who's, um, let's just say extraordinarily unhappy because their subdivision got tied up in, in the flag lot moratorium. So, I may be asking for security tomorrow, but, we, we have, we have three major subdivisions held by a moratorium now, so.
I, I know of at least three more that people were, but again, it's the flag lot.
Yeah.
And if that's not what we want, then.
Yeah.
I want, I want one in the moratorium.
I, I agree, I mean, we, 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 we're tasked by the people we, that elect us, that help shape the future in direction of, of county, with, with, obviously with their backing and support, uh, you know, we, we, we gotta take care of the people that put us here. Uh, we, we don't necessarily need to be kinda take care of people that come.
But you need to be protecting the future of the county.
Right, I.
Of the past of us.
Right.
I'm good.
Alright, so that, that's, that's, that's what I'm, right, man.
So I have, I, I propose a, a, another step forward. What I would like to do is transmit that draft to the planning director, so he can put that in the planning commission's hopper as part of what they start to look at.
His email worked, he would've got it too, but it got rejected, I don't know what's wrong with it.
And the, the planning commission asked that we sit down with them, the board, and I, I countered, uh, had a couple of them sit down with them. I would think we need ten people throwing out ideas, and again, I don't wanna give you a bunch of ideas, I, all I'm asking for is, hey, here's the one over the world where we wanna go, and then go do it, and you may come back and say, hey, we got two different ways to do this, what is, what are the board commissioners thinking? But, I, we gotta go forward, I think everybody understands we gotta go.
So, I, I would propose that, and then I need to, um, understand, is this yet another moratorium we need to have on the agenda for May?
I think it is.
So a subdivision on, sort of, a moratorium on sub, what types of subdivisions, any and all?
I, I, I think.
It's A R.
Yeah, it could, yeah. Subdivision of A R.
Any and A R, including one single subdivision?
Right.
Because I think you, you would have to do that.
Yeah, I think without complete value, except for. But, but I also think this is something we need to, we need to work through this, and we need to, uh, and, and we've had some public hearings on this, and I'm not advocating that we don't have any more public hearings, I'm just simply saying.
Okay, can we meet in the Justice Center at the next meeting? No, we have two hearings.
I have A R, but I'm there, I don't know.
The hell may know, how close they are.
Exactly, can't know, but it.
We can find out.
Let's find out.
I, we may. I have to turn out the land, I, I just, I want to.
So, would we just go ahead and terminate the other moratorium, because this is a higher level than that? Or just let it expire?
Which one?
The, the, the flag lot.
I don't think you let the flag lot expire.
Yeah, I don't think they wanna do that. Well, well, I mean, because.
That's gonna.
This is gonna cover that.
That's gonna, this is subdivision whatsoever.
So just let that one expire, come to this one?
Who is that really flaring?
June.
Okay, so, so that one specifically was about flag lots.
Right.
So you can subdivide, uh, land and have a five acre and five acres.
But, but if we do a more.
Not if we do a more tight on subdivision, in A R.
Oh, I thought you were doing a moratorium on subdividing less than five acres.
So even saying everything, any and all subdivision.
I, I don't think you can, I, I think that gets super complicated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, so a moratorium on all subdivisions.
In A R.
In A R.
That's right.
And how long?
I'll put a short time up here, probably, I want to go, but I know that's not realistic, a hundred and twenty days. And we gotta sit down with the planning commission, and we just gotta.
Well, they only meet.
Go ahead.
Twice.
Why not just do one hundred and eighty days?
I, I want people to know we wanna get it done.
We can't live, we can't live in a moratorium.
Yeah, we don't have to come back. But, we need.
So we'll have public hearings on, on, uh, moratorium on beer and wine licenses and any and all subdivisions in A R.
Right.
On the next agenda. I think it's a positive movement on both issues.
Oh, um, so, I, I don't think we can lift you up. There is a.
It's gonna run out in June, you mean?
Well.
It'll be absorbed by that one.
What about R one?
Flag lots in R one.
Yeah.
It, it, it won't, it won't be absorbed by that, it's only for A R.
What I'm talking about is, I, I know there's a subdivision that's gonna put flag lots on.
R one?
Grabways on Jeff Davis Road.
Is it R one?
Yeah, R one, it is before, uh, Hannah's dual bridge, I mean, before, uh, Jeff Davis Bridge coming in, certain day.
Now, I, I, I don't.
Is that R one?
I thought, I, I, I don't know where that is in your one.
I don't think so, yeah, I think it's all A R.
I, it's A R, it's A R, I just, I just wanna get, I just wanna get mixed up, you know? Doesn't need to be at all.
No, yeah. I'm writing a note to ask about those specifics.
There's one inside.
Jason, you and Doug wanna do that one?
I'm gonna be here in a minute.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll draft it and send it to you.
There is more on, on those. That, that's where it's, um, wrong.
Yeah, it, well, not all ones that don't, all that's your problem.
Shannonville.
Shannonville.
I don't think we have any R one that's not developed.
It's, it's all R one, and they have all, they have all. But you would probably, yeah.
Look at that.
Yeah, we have to look, so we pick that one.
Alright.
If, if, I mean, we can just say A R and R one. We have very little R one, right, quite a little.
Yeah, I think so.
Why?
Yeah. I think I do it kinda like.
Moving on.
Alright, yeah, it is almost quarter to noon, Thurston Park Ball Field.
Um, this, so this is a conversation that Commissioner Ellington and I had, I had a separate conversation with, with the recreation director. It's, because of the numbers, it's getting a lot of heavy use. So I think Commissioner Ellington that approached me is, hey, we, because the ball field, ball teams are actually practicing on it, and, well, uh, Commissioner Biggs, if you've seen, they're actually utilizing, heavily utilizing Lincoln Park too, which is great. But the, uh, the Lincoln Park ones are in pretty good shape, um, comparatively speaking to Thurston, so, um, we wanted to see if, we maybe wanna include some improvements to the ball field at Thurston to give more practice opportunities for teams. Uh, it didn't wanna go down this road too far without running by the board.
I, I, this is my situation, I, I, over the years, I've had many, many requests, uh, renovations out of there, I, you know, uh, I, I've always been, you know, uh, I guess, this is, I've always sit around this table and, 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 and sat up on, up on podium and voted yes for every single county park when they needed something, and now I'm, and my constituents are asking for something. In eight years, we did zero, just zero, other than cut the grass out there, zero. Uh, and I think if you go back with simple research, you'll find every other park's had multiple things done in eight years, so, it's my turn, guys, it's my constituents' turn, we, we, we need a place to survive, we want some love to, uh, we, we, and our section of the county, we, uh, we got, we got a lot, we, we got a lot, a lot, a lot of children, and, and they need a place to go without having to drive all the way into town, and it gets utilized, and, and we're stuff, we don't have power. We do have bathrooms, I mean, and that, that's, we do have power in the bathrooms, but other than that, that's basically it, we, we, we do have, we, we, I think we have, we did have some picnic tables somewhere that stole, but.
There's still that.
You know, but it, it's, it's, it's basically that, what used to be a remnants of old school ball field, I mean, you know, it's, probably hadn't been really, even been heavy done to that ball field in probably thirty years. So it's basically a cow pasture that we mowed and, and the children that played ball on it. So, I, I, I just hope that, I, I've passed, Jason's kinda come up with something, some stuff with the rec staff, and it was, I, I guess the same people are coming, and we are going to the rec staff, cause I hit Jason with it about the same time the rec staff hit him with it, so, uh, I just ask you to be, be open minded and to take that into consideration when it comes forth.
And I, I, I would like to maybe even propose that we, we look at actually creating a playable field there.
Yeah, yeah, like I said, I, I, I invite you to go take a look at it, and then I invite you to go out into your districts and look at ball fields with the section. Don't, don't have it once.
No, no parts to the district three.
But, uh.
Which is funny, that's wrong city yet.
So, this, I, I, I just ask you to take that, and, and at the end of the day, you know, uh, regardless of where you live in town, you represent everybody here, you, you're elected by your district, but everything you do impacts every person here, so, um, help me take care of my, my, my citizens, just like I'm helping you take care of yours.
Yeah, I, 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 I would go, take it the next step, is let, let, maybe let me include it in this solicitation for some of the work we're gonna do at the city.
I, 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 I would go with taking the next step is let, let maybe let me include it in this solicitation for some of the work we're gonna do at the Civic Center. I can keep the expense separate. So obviously this is an unincorporated expense versus a joint project.
Yeah, it's not joint project, it's not.
We could ask.
But that, that's all I got on that.
Well, we've been using Weaver Park too.
We can join up all that.
All right, that's good, that's excellent.
All right. Jones County Resolution.
Which commissioner was it that brought that up? I put that, I put that on there just to do a follow up on that.
I'm making more, I talked about some stuff, I talked about two, but so I don't know. And I got you a resolution, but we already done that, so.
Yes, yes. So I, I reached out, I reached out to the leadership at the, the Jones County. So, uh, and I, and I apologize, I don't remember which commissioner it was. But they, basically that, uh, one of y'all had suggested that they had a resolution that compel, the resolution or ordinance that compelled all their ancillary boards to, to a certain standard of, um, meeting. Yeah, so in other words, it's, it set, it set the same standards for them as it was for the board of commissioners. So in reaching out to their leadership, they're like, man, we're not, we looked everywhere, we're not exactly sure. And so, um, I guess we could design something from scratch, but is that something that we, you want staff working on? And we're talking about like planning commission, you know. Board assessors. And the ordinance change?
I think it said something about other boards, I would have to go back and.
Yeah, I think I was asking about that.
This was just a follow up, I, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't dropping, flinging off here.
I, I think it's actually missing from the final cut. Uh, but we had talked about having, uh, planning commission, board elections, board assessors. Those that we appoint, uh, follow the same type of procedures as far as how public hearings go. Uh, being broadcast on YouTube. So, I mean, planning commission is pretty much in line, but we had a couple of boards that meeting other buildings and, uh, not necessarily as, uh, widely known about. But I think, I think we had had a consensus, that's what we wanted to do, but I don't think it actually.
So if, if that's the case, then just maybe an amendment to our meeting procedures to include language to that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm just gonna tell you from my point. I mean, I, 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 I'm able to watch planning, uh, it'd be nice if we could watch. But I mean, I will, if, if, I want to be able to see what's going on and it's maybe just as a representative. Cause I'm gonna always have an opportunity to go to and I, if I'm able to say, you know, the citizens will say, and, uh, I, you know. It saves a lot of phone calls and miscommunication and folks can go look at something and, and get an answer to that on foot.
I think there doesn't, are you, you want us to move on?
Okay, so we circle back to that, uh.
So if we don't have it, we want it, right?
Right. We want one standard. All right, nine one one dispatching services, regional.
Yeah, so I, I really, I just wanted to put a link to the legislation that passed, uh, just to give it the, the board an idea of like what's coming down the pipeline as far as nine one one. Uh, I had a robust conversation with the sheriff about this issue. And he's agreed to, um, uh, have initial talks about potentially looking at regionalization options. So we want to first take the step to go visit a regional operation. And it would probably be in, uh, myself, the sheriff and our emergency management director. Take a trip to Middle Flan and then just start exploring that opportunity. But I didn't want the board to, it's in Elleville. They cover eight counties. Yeah. Uh, and I've talked extensively with Commissioner Ellington about it, but I just wanted to loop the whole board into the fact that this is something that we're just looking at preliminarily. I mean, uh, we know we're not authorized to make any moves or decisions based on that, but it's just something we want to.
I think we have to explore it. I think, you know, with the new requirements that are coming down, these rural counties, of all of us, big rural counties that haven't financed resources for the county budgets. I think it probably makes sense that we house a regional.
Cause the, the requirements, I mean, they're, they're still trying to figure out, I, do y'all, do y'all know about the House bill that they're? What, 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 what's it?
K H B four two three?
Right, they're, basically, uh, they're gonna pass, uh, you know, which happens, uh, you know, they're gonna pass these unfunded things and they're gonna come land in our lap. And, 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 and even though we don't consider ourselves that small compared to some others, uh, there's gonna be, you know, they're, they're talking about a lot of AI stuff, video, you know, to see, I mean, that. I guess I'm trying to. A lot of stuff, it, it's gonna be so much information coming in and it's gonna be, you know, and once you, you, you'll have the equipment to get that information. And then you gotta be able to, to stat, decipher that information as it comes in. And I think we're gonna see a substantial way of, of cost, of, of getting that down nine one one. Uh, and, and, and Jason's had some experience with it, uh, you know, uh, non official talks, just bouncing stuff off some of our touching counties that are around us. But some of the trainings is kind of saying, hey, if y'all look at this, you know, uh, I did get some nods like, yeah, I mean, you know, well, you know, uh. They don't have any idea now what they, it could go from someone just joining one that's already in place or creating one for maybe the surrounding counties or becoming one that one of them create. I mean, you know, uh, and with the data and the technology they have, that they, you know, twenty years ago, if you told me, hey, you, you, you know, somebody at Pike County is gonna dispatch the ambulance to your house in Compton. We would all put up our hands and say, eh, ain't no way, but. Right now, I, this Friday night, I mean, this, this past Friday night, I had my, my second opportunity to use our EMS service. And, uh, my wife called nine one one, where I went, I did tell my, my mother-in-law came from the sister living stable. And she had an incident with, um, her blood sugar, where we had one calling nine one one. Uh, my wife called on the cell phone, yes, well, that phone call was in Pike County. Then they had to transfer us back to us. So it's happening already, you know, and a lot of us don't have a house phone anymore. So, but, uh, that, that's a prime example. Service guy there, uh, our EMS service was great. A big shout out to our volunteer fire department. Big shout out to Lincoln Park volunteer fire department and their chief, cause he showed up at my house to assist. So, you know, and, 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 and that's communication, they know that bridge is cut off right there and they could, you know, so. But I want to give kudos to the volunteers and the EMS service, cause they were spot on. And, uh, and they didn't even know who I was, well, the fire chief, who I was, he got there, but the EMS picked out, no clue who I was. They weren't like, they were just, oh, we're going to miss Ellen's house. It's great. But, uh, back to what, my, my, what I was really talking about here. Uh, we need to look at this region. I think we owe it our opportunity to look at it, cause it, I mean, our budget's only gonna, even we don't want to say, our budget is just gonna increase. And we got constantly looking at ways to string that, to keep it down. Uh, cause there's gonna be some things we can control and some things we can't. So, uh, just look at it is all I'm asking. But I think staff needs some direction to say, hey, go, go forward.
And we think it's a good idea to pursue it, but we just want to make sure that all the commissioners were on the.
You didn't find out that, hey, what, what are they checking?
And I, I don't think it's something that requires a vote, we're not committing anything, but it's just, uh, it's just, but hey, if you, if you got a grievance, if you said, let's talk about it now.
And we have, I mean, we have a regional EMS assessment that works great.
Right, and, and, and at the end of the day, I did want to say, nine one one is our responsibility. That, I'm gonna leave it right, nine one one is our responsibility. Other people take care of it, but it's our responsibility.
I mean, we can hammer through these things, maybe cover most of these things.
Ready? Nobody brought lunch.
All right, we covered Civic Center, uh, we covered Drake building renovations. The only thing I want to add to this conversation is that you'll see the staff issue a RF, a RFP for design build services just for the tax commissioner component. Cause it requires a renovation. So just for one quadrant of the building. Just the tax commissioner.
Have we brought Amy over and talked to him about this?
We will once, once this design gets underway, you know the word, so we, you know, we'll.
He was in the room, we just had.
Yeah, so. So we're gonna go base off of exactly what we, the, the, the concept that we already have. We're gonna set this out and see what comes back and we'll, we'll obviously include any communications we have. But.
Is this something he's seen before?
Yeah, I don't have anything new. I don't have, yeah.
Oh, and this is something he's previously seen and he was.
Yeah, I'll be glad to, to reshare it with, just to double check it, but, yeah. But, so this is just a, a design build RFP, so we can get some bids back to see what it would take to, uh, do a full renovation of one quarter of the Drake building to retrofit it, to make it usable for the tax commissioner office. Number three, GIS, this is already something we're working on. We're, we're in the process of converting our zoning map into a GIS later and we're halfway home. To where we can, we'll proof it and we'll publish it on our website. You'll be able to click on it and get accurate zoning information, completely separate from anything that you'll see on the tax assessor's website. We'll pull all the tax assessor's website over to it, so you'll have, um, you'll get parcel data and all that stuff as other layers, but we'll have our own zoning layer. And we're halfway home with that. We have a Lincoln Park cleanup day coming up this Saturday?
It's Friday.
It's Friday, okay. So, um, Commissioner Biggs and I worked on a, uh, in partnership with GFL, they're gonna help us out to where some of our elderly population can, um, avoid contact with code enforcement and do a cleanup day. So we're having a cleanup day this weekend. We want to say thanks to our partners at GFL for helping us out with that. And, uh, we can report back what level of success we have with that. I think it's something maybe we've done in the past, I can't remember. Yeah, yeah. Uh, so we just wanted to put that on your radar. We are also getting ready to release, uh, which is budgeted for, uh, uh, or did we already put it out? The, for the Lincoln Park lift sta, lift station.
I've read it out, yeah.
It's getting ready to go out.
We're back to Smith and RFP for lift station.
So that's coming. We covered the Jeff Davis Road element in our previous conversations. Chris, you want to give a brief update on? We had a one commissioner ask a question about timeline of designs of the Po Biddy Bridge project.
Uh, yes, sir, so we're probably, uh, about a month and a half away from everything complete and getting advertised.
Don't just don't get condemned.
We feel good that that's not the case.
Uh, we also had a commissioner ask a question related to when it's under construction, uh, it's gonna be very, very minimal disruption to transportation.
When we're changing that very fast, which is one of the things that we talked about, everyone will jack the bridge, just very subtle. You may feel the bump, but it feel like a bridge, we're not gonna be shutting down traffic. The only time we'll shut down traffic is to move equipment and do the temporary lane closure to get the equipment on the side of the bridge to jack up. So, but we'll not do any long term, any closures or detour.
Excellent, thank you. Any, any questions related to that project?
Um, well, I guess, um, after the design and everything, then, then.
I will work with Alan for the, uh, post on the Georgia Department of Government website and doing the public notice to have a free bid and then award the contract. Uh, and, and we think it's probably, you know, based off of what I'm seeing with the schedule work, uh, probably a ninety day construction schedule we're stationed here.
This will be design bid bill. Uh, Chairman and I, uh, and Slade, uh, attended the, uh, planning commission, uh, meeting. We presented the concept of the techno, technology overlay district, cause then, which I think went well. So they're gonna, they've got that in their hopper to begin working on. Uh, we covered flag lots and AR minimum lot size. I will, uh, get, um, uh, what we'll call the Ellington amendment over to. Over, over to Doug so he can get it to the planning commission members, uh, cause, you know, um, at the previous workshop session, we get talked about getting this in the planning commission hopper. Working on flag lots and AR minimum lot size, so I think that covers that. We, uh, have we soccer field irrigation, do we have a solicitation out for that or?
Well, no.
Okay. So as many of you may or may not know, I mean, I, I think at varying degrees, our irrigation system in the soccer field has either completely failed or is partially operational, just depending on the day. So we had, uh, EMC put a spec together for us and we put that on the street to see what comes back. Uh, that's another thing we'll have to talk to the city about, uh, funding sources for. And then, um, sorry, this is a little redundant, but, um, also Thurston well construction. I mean, aside from, I think we're about ninety percent of the way there. Where are we on payouts? Do you remember?
Fifty percent.
Fifty.
So, so they will send another payout at the end of this month and it should be fine. They're waiting on delivery for the generator and another electrical component that's kind of hung up with all the stuff that's going on in the world right now. But that's really what they're left is two electrical components. I was outside, out there this morning and if y'all haven't seen a beautiful building, great for the community, it's gonna really help our water system.
Is it online?
It has not been turned online yet, waiting for the generator to talk and everything.
What's the, what's the final, uh, do we need a final say so to put it online or are we needing?
Yes, so, so they'll do the, the final inspection, we'll get, they'll test our coordination and when we get our, you know, chemicals right, so they'll have to test that water source. Once we get it all mixed up and then they'll get the resource.
We had a.
They had a temporary pull behind us, now we've had the old building, this will be on, pat down permanently, nothing but that well.
A bail over.
Bail over, one hundred percent.
And then, um, you have to teach blocks, we got a pass for on that and that's it.
I mean, I'm in the back, now it's two of yours, man. Well, we'd already talked.
Okay, um, we have any comments anyone needs to cover before going to the decision decision?
The only thing I'll just, yeah. I just want to update on surplus deal.
From like how they're going in terms of the sales? All, all the vehicles we've put up there have sold. Cause I've had the sheriff has, uh, given me three, maybe more, uh, got an email from one of his, uh, folks yesterday, he didn't open up, but, uh, told him I needed to get them approved. They've already, tax auction is already coordinating with them, but, uh, I saw one of their deputies say, I got this order approved these now before they put them on websites for sale. He sent me an email with a attachment, I'm hoping, cause he said he had a couple more. I'm hoping we're gonna have five of y'all to approve in the upcoming quarter.
All of those doesn't count.
Uh, yeah, except the, the equipment has, they have a different auction theory for the old generators and stuff, but the vehicles have sold.
Uh, just, just, I get more of a question. Uh, yeah, we're about to, we got the lift station, Lincoln Park on, on list, uh, uh, anyway, uh, yeah. We can, uh, the city's willing to take that thing as we do the remodel here and let's get out of the city business, since we don't want to absorb the money. Cause it's gonna be rebuilding again in the future and, and I'm sure they're reluctant to take one on that it's got a lot of problems. So we're gonna fix it up, make it all new, with this, with the time we want. At least wash the tires before you sell the truck. Uh, and that would be time to, 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 to ask, hey, guys, we got your brand new lift station here, sign and drive. Yeah, uh, let's, let's get it off.
But they would need the, they would then need the service and delivery revenue from the customers. So that, that, that would have that mess.
But they already did and we're, we're paying that. We're, we're, we're.
Passing through.
It's a pass through, so they're, they're actually still getting that, so, and if there's an increase, it's still a pass through, so it's, they're guaranteed paying us, so.
But you were talking about like, and just, just the lift station or the whole system?
To the lift station. No, no, I, I wouldn't follow that. They're not gonna take the system. Let's, let's, I'm.
We could try.
Face it, face it, face it.
We could try.
This, 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 the lift station itself, because that's where our expenses is at. That's where our recurring maintenance is at. This stuff, and I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, but I mean, that, that is, say, but just like we did the one out here in Northside.
Right.
You know, um. That's it.
So all that substructure, uh, sewage and everything, even after we get rid of those lift stations, we're still responsible.
City's been tricking the county.
The city took on that lift station a couple of years ago, the one, uh.
Yeah, no, but we still pipe this in the ground.
Yeah, yeah.
We'll fix it when it breaks.
Yeah, correct.
Again?
Wait, you know, man.
I go back?
I, I just want to explain the, the, the place of pipe area. I, I, I have some constituents, uh, that, uh, that, that, this, this come up in one of my previous meetings. Uh, I, I think Chairman, or, I don't know. Uh, yeah, this, this was presented, uh, and being a representative of the place, we presented it to them, so I'm running back to them to show it to the board. And it is basically a ordinance. Uh, it's specific. I'm not, uh, advocating for something to be specific, but it, it, it would basically will cover any type of industry or anything that would come in here that could potentially have, I, I'm not sure that any industry doesn't have some potential, but, uh, potentially or, or higher risk energy. I mean, for example, this would be a good thing to use on solar, uh, for clean, for potential cleanup. But, but basically where we, we have some protection for the citizens of the county, uh, you know, restricting or requiring bonds or cleanups or anything like that. And I think that was brought up in one of our meetings in public comment, and then I was provided this stuff. So I just, uh, I, I graciously agree to come and share that with you guys and, uh, food for thought. Uh, so, I mean, I, I guess, I mean, I'm, I'm gonna say it just like it was intended, man, I don't have to say any bone by it. Yeah, well, we don't get to decide who comes here. We want things to come here. We don't get to decide who comes here, but we do get to decide what ordinance we have. That's up to us. That's up to this board, no other board. That's up to us.
Yeah, I would just, uh, oh, yes, I D A, there are thoughts on it. I.
Haven't seen it.
Yeah, I, I know. If we want to, uh, look at this, I think the attorney needs to look at it and I D A needs to look at it, uh, to see where we can go with this. I, I'm not against this at all, uh, because the issue is the one E M C that we already have, uh, online with an agreement to purchase. Again, is it like after the fact affects them or is it like all future things?
I think that's where we have to go. Again, I don't want to pay any lawyers.
I haven't seen it in the budget yet.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm just presenting what constituents presented to me as a representative constituent. I, 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 I cannot, I committed out with Chairman.
I got your point, man.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't have anything, uh, so we need a motion to go into executive session personnel.
Come on over.
Second? Second over here.
And this will be, this will be pretty quick, I think, Chris.
Now, that's your role when we talk about Adam, that if y'all want to Adam, we can sure do it. Very short, very cheap.
Three hours.
Wait, get him off of you.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, Chris.